Uh now we'll call, we're gonna call the Manoa Neighborhood Board meeting to order. Uh Partner, please do the roll calls first.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh Members, when I call your name, please ans- respond with here or present. Uh Member Watson?
Present.
Member Bolso? Member Nagaji?
Present.
Member Fukumoro?
Here.
Uh Member Lee? Member Koff?
Present.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh Member Chong?
Here.
And Member Koano? Okay, uh, thank you, Members. Currently, we have, we have six out of nine, uh, present. Uh So for right now, what we're gonna do, since this is in- initial convening, um, for those of you who did not come to the, um, installation ceremony, uh, last, uh, the other weekend, I'm gonna do the oath of office for those of you who are present. Um, and then, once we're done with oath of office, um, Chair Pro Tem Zane will then, uh, take over and run the meeting from there. Uh So Members, if you can, uh, repeat after me. I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully support.
That I will faithfully support.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
And laws.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Hawaii.
Of the state of Hawaii.
The charter and laws.
The charter and laws.
Of the city and county of Honolulu.
Of the city and county of Honolulu.
And the provisions of the neighborhood plan.
The provisions of the neighborhood plan.
And will conscientiously.
And will conscientiously.
And impartially discharge.
Impartially discharge.
Discharge.
My duties.
My duties.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
As a member of the neighborhood board.
As a member of the neighborhood board.
To which I have been elected.
Which I have been elected.
But I haven't been elected.
Sure. Okay, thank you, folks. Uh, Member Zane, the, uh, sorry, Pro- Chair Pro Tem Zane. Um, the show is yours, but, uh, just as a reminder, we do not have quorum. So once we get to those areas that need that, just as a reminder, unless people start showing up.
That's it. Thank you very much, Partner. Uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take the agenda a little bit out of order first. Uh, to first see if we can fill in the vacancies. So going to item three on the agenda is filling of the vacancies. Do we have anybody on, in attendance at this meeting right now for sub-district one, uh, subdivision two?
Robert, Robert.
Yeah, Ellen?
Can't fill vacancies.
If you don't have quorum.
If you don't have quorum. So you have to do the police and the fire, and then see if other board members show up.
Yeah.
Thanks. Thank you for helping me on that one, Ellen. Uh, in the meantime, I get to go with, uh, emergency response reports. We'll start with, uh, Honolulu Fire Department, please. If anybody from Honolulu Fire Department's here. Hearing, and, uh, we'll hold off on that. Uh, I do see Honolulu Police Department though. Go ahead.
Hi, Aloha Lieutenant Taro Nakamura with HPD. Also online is Sergeant, uh, Nishimoto. Uh, these are stats for June as compared to the previous month. Motor vehicle thefts were four as compared to eight. Burglaries were eleven as compared to one. Thefts in general were, went down a little bit, eight compared to fifteen. And UEMVs, which is theft from autos, um, that was four as compared to three. The total calls of service of six thousand five hundred thirty-seven. And further statistical information can be found at HonoluluPD.org. And for this month's safety tip, um, I, I kinda wanted to do something a little bit different, so I found a, um, emergency, a family emergency communication plan, um, PDF on the FEMA website, and it had some good ideas. Um, I, I forwarded it onto the, um, the various chairs of the neighborhood board, so, um, I'm sure you can get it from, from your chair, or, um, just go to FEMA. Uh, but it, it talks about having a, an emergency plan for, uh, different ways to communicate with your, your family in the event of an emergency. Whether it's, um, a natural one or something man-made. And so it's a, it's, it's a little bit long, it's eight pages, but, um, I highly recommend that, um, you folks take a look at it and, um, create some ideas, so you have a plan for your, your own personal family in the event of an emergency. And that's our safety tip for the month.
Thanks very much, Lieutenant. Does, uh, any members of the board have any questions for Honolulu Police Department? Diane? Your hands raised? Diane, are you there?
Yeah.
Can you hear me? Okay. Um, you know, every, every morning, weekdays, I drive down University Avenue. And between, um, Metcalf and Miley Way, it's supposed to be tollway until eight-thirty. And I noticed that the students are parking there earlier and earlier. And I went by at seven-thirty in the morning. Tollway is until eight-thirty. All the cars were parked in those parking spaces. It's supposed to be tollway. And when I see that, I try to call the police, but I guess no one's doing anything about it, because they continue to park there. And they're supposed to be tollway, I mean, the only people that are supposed to be parked there are the construction by Metcalf and University. But the students see that they're parking there, so they figure they can park there too. But it should be, it should be tollway on both sides of the street until eight-thirty.
Sure, um, I work the third watch, but I'll definitely forward that information onto, uh, day watch, so they can, um, they can, um, take a look at those toll zones in the morning. You're talking about on University, oh, of course.
Right, and I, I, as I say, when I see it, I try to call, before eight o'clock, I try to call. But they continue to park there until, you know, and they're not. Pretty active, between, you know, rush hour time. They're parking there before eight, and today was seven-thirty. Who knows how much earlier they are parking?
Sure, I'll definitely forward that information onto the day watch.
Thank you.
Member Fox?
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Thank you. I live on University Avenue, right before Miley Way. Uh, so I understand Joan's concern about parking. However, the fact is that we have a huge street on University. It contracts to a two-lane road above Miley Way. Um, in the thirty-five years that I've lived on University Avenue, I've never seen anyone, anyone at all, use the parking lane for driving. It's not very convenient, for number one. It's just the, the traffic that comes out of Miley Way from mid-packed area goes into two-lane streets. So, to be honest with you, I don't see a big issue. The police department has so much more to do than regulate a parking space on University Avenue. Now, on the university side of the street, that's where people going into the Manoa Valley. And again, mostly, at that time in the morning, people are exiting the valley to go to work. We do not have a great deal of traffic going into the valley, uh, on University or on Punahou. So, as much as I appreciate that we have signs, I'm not a real legalist, uh, to be honest with you, and I appreciate your sentiment, Joan, but, I mean, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. I mean, these kids are trying to get to university on time. And if they miss class, they get dinged pretty heavily, you know? I think a little bit of compassion and common sense might be a good idea. And not, I'd rather have the police department take care of, you know, our crazy Ian, uh, violent homeless person that's coming up University Avenue twice a day. And screaming and yelling and harassing people, and fr- very violent. Now, I will follow through on that, but that's the kind of thing I think the police department really needs to concentrate itself on right now. We have an uptick in violence and crime. Parking just doesn't seem to be like the biggest issue in the world that I would worry about. No offense, but just I'd share my two cents.
Robert, that's ridiculous. These students are supposed to be law-abiding citizens. They should watch and look at the signs, and they should not park there. There's parking on Oahu Avenue. They do not have to park over there, and it's free on Oahu Avenue. Why would you park over there when it's free? It is a law-abiding.
We'll just, we'll, we'll make sure we address, um, both situations. How's that?
Appreciate your help. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any members of the board have any other comments or any other issues? Uh, Robert, uh.
Oh, I'm done.
Yeah.
Robert, you're on audio. Robert Zane is a little weird. Is there something you can fix?
Weird.
Weird, uh, sorry.
Kinda echoey.
Really? Okay, um.
It's better.
Oh, maybe, maybe just go a little bit closer.
Also, also, another part of it, uh, ladies and gentlemen, if you can mute your microphone until you're recognized by Chair, if we have too many microphones on, the, the system is trying to pick up whatever microphone makes, makes noise, so if you guys can mute yourself until Chair recognize you, that'd be, that'd be very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, with that said.
Uh-oh. Oh, you're down, you're down.
Robert, we cannot, Robert, we cannot hear you.
Oh, you can't hear me now?
No, it's very, very soft.
Oh, yeah, you're down.
No, not yet. Okay. I will keep working on the audio. Uh, in the meantime, I'll pass the gavel on to, uh, Second Vice Chair Nagaji's while I work on the audio issues. Dave?
All right, thank you, Robert Zane. I'm taking the gavel while he works out his technical issues. So let me just ask again real quick, do we have any more members of the board who would like to ask questions or make comments of Lieutenant Nakamura? All right, hearing and seeing none, I'm going to members of the community, and I see that Glenn has a hand raised, so Glenn, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I heard recently on Next Door that there've been several reports of catalytic, catalytic converters being stolen in the lower Manoa area. Um, I was just, wanted to ask HPD if, uh, if there's a, a rash of, uh, such, uh, theft going on, uh, lately. I just heard of, uh, thir- uh, three in the Atherton and McKinley areas?
Yeah, um, catalytic converter theft is, is a chronic, ongoing problem, um, island-wide and probably nationwide. Basically due to some of the parts inside those, um, catalytic converters. So, yeah, we are aware of it, and we are, um, trying to address the situation, not only from the, the patrol side, but also, um, um, if and when we finally do catch people, or on the, um, the intake side where they try to quote-unquote recycle these things, or sell them illegally. Um, we're trying to address them from all different, um, uh, ways. But, yeah, it is a, it is a chronic problem, and, um, the, the best thing that I can recommend from a patrol viewpoint is, um, just to be on the lookout for, um, as good neighbors. If you see somebody that's in your neighborhood, that's, that's not from the neighborhood, just feel free to call us. Um, whether it's crazy guy Ian going up university, or somebody who's, you know, going around your neighbors, um, you know, Prius, and you don't, you don't think that's right, just give us a call. Um, we'd much rather, um, go there, go there, try to identify who they are. Um, and arrest them if we can. If we cannot, at least we can identify who's out and about in the neighborhood and, um, uh, chase them away. So, yeah, statue of your problem. There, there is a chronic problem with catalytic converters. Um, it's island-wide, it's, it's nationwide, and, um, we're continuing to address the situation.
Thank you. Um, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Better?
All right, I'm passing the gavel back to, uh, Acting Chair Zane.
Thank you, Dave. Uh, Mr. David Shimokawa, your hand is raised. Go ahead.
Yes, I wa- wanted to express thanks to Lieutenant and his officers for their responses the past, uh, four weeks in which I had to respond to three trespass cases. Two of them in which the officers came in just in time to, uh, confront the, uh, trespasser. Or at our, at my, uh, house construction site. So thank you, Lieutenant. Please pass on my thanks, appreciation to the, uh, officers who responded each time.
Well done, sir, and thank you for your support. I see Member Koff's hand is raised at this time. Go ahead, Member Koff.
Yes, I have a question. Um, some months ago, somebody threw a rock in our window, and we applied for a TRO. And we've gone to the judge about three or four times now and had it renewed. And, uh, they'll renew it again, but it seems that they never seem to serve the person. And I'm wondering if you have any feeling whether this is important, that you keep going and getting the thing renewed, and it doesn't, doesn't seem to go anywhere, you know? I, I don't. Could you, do you have any comment on that? I'm?
Um, well, the first question I mi- I, I might, um, ask you is, uh, i- is your original problem still ongoing? Yeah, I mean, is it?
No, actually.
With the neighbor, or, or?
It's not an ongo-. It's not an ongoing situation. It was episodic, and so it hasn't, hasn't appeared in a couple, since this, uh, incident, last incident. So part of you think, well, maybe it's just gone away, so stop. But you don't know, you know, you just don't know.
Yeah, well, that would, that would be the question I would ask myself. And then, um, what's the, the likelihood of, um, it happening, things happening in the future and, and, uh, um, the likelihood that anything dangerous would happen, so, um, without knowing all the facts, it'd be difficult for me to, to give you a, a solid yes or no on anything, but, you know, those, those are the kind of things, if, if it's not, if the source problem is not occurring, uh, or reoccurring, then that might be a strong indicator for you, yeah?
Thank you. Thank you.
Are there any other, um, members in the community who wish to speak with Honolulu Police Department? Hearing and, oh, Joan, your hand's still raised. Um, are you, is there anything else you wanted to bring up, Joan?
No, no, sorry. Computer, uh, failure.
Si- hearing and seeing none, I believe we're done. Lieutenant Nakamura, thank you for your time tonight.
A good evening.
You as well. Let's see, um, Partner, uh, was saying that, I believe you were saying that, um, we still do not have quorum for the members of the neighborhood board? We're one short. Uh, thank you for letting us know about that. Since we are still one member short, and Honolulu Fire Department has not appeared, we will move on to city monthly reports. Oh, thousand?
Uh, yes, Chair, um, some members of, I'm sorry, some board members who were elected may have come in too late for being sworn in, so perhaps if there are any members like that, they can identify themselves and Partner can swear them in. Because without swearing in, you can't really, uh, vote or do anything official, so.
We don't even have quorum anyway at this point, though, that's the problem.
Yeah, um, but, but in, in case we, we do get the, that one person coming in, um, at least the people who may have come in late can get sworn in right now.
Okay, the only person that has, the only person remaining, um, that need, that has logged on to the meeting that needs to complete, um, oath of office is Member Koano. So if, um, Chair Zane, if you want to, we can, we can do that right now. If you want, just so that it's, that she's complete and, and done with that process. Go ahead. Okay. Thank you. Uh, Member Koano, if you can, um, turn on your mic and repeat after me.
Yes.
Uh, I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully support.
That I will faithfully support.
The Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Hawaii.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Hawaii.
The charter and laws of the city and county of Honolulu.
The charter and law of the city and county of Honolulu.
And the provisions of the neighborhood plan.
And the provision of the neighborhood plan.
And will conscientiously.
And will consciously.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge my duties.
Discharge my duties.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
As a mem- as a member of the neighborhood board.
As a member of the neighborhood board.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
Thank you very much, Member Koano.
Thank you. Thank you, Partner. Appreciate it.
Okay.
Um, so I just joined, um, a little later than I should have. Does that, do I count? I mean,
Yes.
My persons make the quorum?
No. No, we, we're still one short of quorum.
Shucks, I was hoping I'm the last person. Okay.
Yeah, we're still one short, but you as a member, you're, you're good to go.
Okay, thank you.
Robert, do you have something to say? You're still muted, Robert.
Are you speaking to me?
No, uh, Robert Fox. Robert Fox, you're still muted. You're, you're talking, you're still muted.
I'm muted. So, I appeared to serve for section twelve of four of the Neighborhood Association, uh, last season. And I understand we have five vacancies in four. And I wasn't sure what the process was. I think I got into the meeting pretty early, but I wasn't sure what your process was in terms of filling the vacancies for the various sectors of Manoa. So I'm still willing to volunteer for, uh, section four. Um, but I wasn't sure, you know, what your process was, and I didn't want to impede in the process here. But that might make your one person for quorum.
Oh, you wasn't, oh, that's right, you're not a member of the board right now. I'm sorry, I'm going to, I'm going to the list again, I just realized that. Um, but, um, Partner, correct me if I'm wrong, it is for the record, uh, we need actually the people who are elected onto the board and to have quorum to be able to add in new people, correct? Correct. To take any board business and take board action, you, for this board, based on the number of seats, you need at least nine members attending the meeting, which we are one short right now. Yeah, so.
Well, thanks for clarifying.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for offering that, though. So, once we get a quorum, we'll hopefully be able to, um, let you onto the board for, um, region, to get some of these vacancies filled up, especially for like sub-district fours, you were saying. So, seeing as how we don't have quorum at this time, we're gonna take the agenda out of order again, moving on to, uh, monthly reports. I will start with, um, I believe Councilmember Say, he, I believe I saw him sign in earlier. Councilmember, are you there? I'm not. Remember you're muted? Councilmember Say?
Hi, this is Christian, I'm in Councilmember Say's office. I see him on, I'm not sure if he's having technical difficulty. Um, but we are happy to take back any questions, um, or concerns at this time.
Okay, um, Janelle, I'm gonna hold off for now, since, uh, so to give Councilmember a chance to get, work on the technical issues.
Okay, that would be awesome. Thank you.
Yep, in the which case, um, do we have, uh, Kim on the line, Kim Sparlin from, uh, Mayor Belangiardi's office? There, no, she's, she's not on right now. She's not on yet. We have Dominic Di- um, DS, if I'm, if I pronounced that correctly, from Border Water Supply. Uh, Dominic contacted me just before the meeting. He had a personal matter to take care of, so he is also absent from the meeting, sir. Thank you for, thank you for not finding us. I see Councilmember Say is available. Councilmember, go ahead.
Okay, thank you very much, Robert. I have my report in the chat, and I'll be happy to answer any questions the board members may have at this time. It's been a very busy, uh, month for us, and, uh, we are all working hard in trying to address the property tax credit. Other issues in regards to the homeless situation throughout the District Five. And also, I would say, some of our potholes that we've been hearing about. But at this time, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have. I also have my report in the chat.
Thank you, Councilmember. Do we have any, um, uh, yes, I do see Member Watson, go ahead.
Hi, Ellen.
Hi, Calvin. Um, yeah, um, a couple of concerns. One is, uh, by the pavilion, by the restrooms between the two ballparks of A'Kaua Loa at Manoa District Park. The benches that had been there for twenty years were taken out. So, there was two benches in there, and if it rained, people would go there and be able to sit on benches, and they were taken out. And the other thing I wanted to say is that we still have Ivan in the scorekeeper's house.
House, okay.
In that little building up the stairs, right? Um, and he is there between the two ballfields, and then the homeless guy, older homeless guy, that's the flute player that used to always sit at Manoa Marketplace by Safeway. Now he has taken over the other scorekeeper's booth. And has his suitcases and buckets and all kind of stuff in there, and sits in there and drinks beer, cans of beer. And then sometimes he just stores his stuff in there and then goes to the pavilion where the benches were taken out, and just kind of sprawls out and takes over that space, so what can be done about this? I mean, they're, they're there even when kids are playing ball, when practice is happening. And everybody walks by there like it's the elephant in the room, and it's not okay. So, something has to happen. Whatever the state and city are doing is not working. So, please help us.
Well, Ellen, let me just say this. We are trying our best to address the homeless situation. Like I stated earlier, for the old-time members of the board and the residents, District Five has more than twelve to fifteen different homeless encampments. And we are trying our best. For Ivan, I think you folks realize, was it a year in, a year ago, January, that we had a discussion where they were, where he was staying close to that stream bed by Vista Place, or whatever, on the side streets of Lowry. And somehow we got him to move, and then now he's back again. You're correct. And I think the best approach is that if that person is really harming the, the, the kids that are playing baseball, whatever, soccer, et cetera, just, you have to call nine-one-one to get that enforcement. Uh, I think the legislature, and you can maybe ask, uh, both Senator and Representative, if there's that issue in regards to civil rights. That, uh, is, until you can find something wrong as far as civil rights, it's gonna be awfully difficult to address that particular individual by himself. But, uh, we will be following up, and, you know, we've been looking at other programs, and, you know, maybe the approach would be, for those that are chronic, for those that we can't rehabilitate, we have to look for another op- option, which I thought was basically institutionalization. But I never, I never did get any further than that as far as the discussion. But, uh, it is at more at the state legislative. But, uh, it is at more at the state legislature's purview because of the civil rights issue. And finally, in closing, I think you folks have heard that all-time board members that for Lieutenant Taro Nakamura, they're trying their best also. But then we have that breakdown in the area, I would say, of the judicial system as far as the courts, and then next would be the public safety, which is our prisons. And that's where the biggest issue lies today as far as the overcrowding of our prisons, and where do you put these homeless individuals who may be chronic, who do not want the services sometimes? And you, you, you and I have heard about it many a times during the past two, two years. But I can sympathize with your concerns, and I'll ask the staff, what else can we do? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, do you have any other members of the board? Have any comments for Councilmember Say? Hearing and seeing none, we'll go to members of the community.
Wait, Patty. Patty, Patty had a question.
Patty, I'm sorry. I didn't hear your hand raised. Go ahead, please.
Oh, um, thank you, Chair Zane. Hi, Calvin, I have a question.
Yes, please, Patty.
Thank you. Um, Kim's not here tonight, but last meeting, which is two months ago, she was assisting our neighborhood with a potential monster home.
On Kalei, right?
Yeah, and then she was able to, um, work with DPP and, and inform me that there was like a stop-work order. However, the contractor continued to work, and she gave me a phone number to call them. I did call it, and, you know, we were not able to connect, and then they were saying that they had to do some work, and now they're okay. So I'm not able to speak to anybody to clarify whether it's a monster house or not, but the neighbors are very concerned because it was a pretty big house and, um, suspected to be maybe a monster house.
House, right.
Um, one of the neighbor asked me to contact, I wanna say, is, um, De La Santo. What is Councilmember's name?
Tyler, Tyler De La Santo.
Tyler, yes, because he, he has a good neighbor, uh, uh, committee regarding these type of issue.
Right.
But then I thought I would, wanted to get your advice before I contact him because we're not in his district per se.
Okay, no, what I could do is that the staff and I can meet and contact, uh, Tyler's office tomorrow and talk to, uh, Mr. Brandon Mitsuda, who is his chief of staff. From there, we'll take it from there as far as what can be done. But I also did contact, uh, Kim this afternoon, and I believe she was out of the office, so I could not follow up with the Kalei project also.
Okay, appreciate your follow-up. Yeah, the, the reason is, um, a lot of confusion is a big a lot, so maybe it is allowable, you know, which we have to accept that, but you know, if it's not, then we would like to get involved sooner rather than later.
Right.
Because, you know, I don't know, once they're built, and can you just pay their way out of it and just be a monster house forever? Is that? I don't know what the procedures are, you know, so I wanted to stop it before it goes too far, and then nothing can be done, and we're stuck with another monster house.
Patty, let's follow up with that because, uh, you know, the other big issue was on Sierra Drive, and I think Chair Waters and I and Representative Seama was very instrumental in having them appeal it to the zoning board of appeal. So we'll follow up on this, and I got staff.
Okay.
Also.
Thank you. Appreciate your help.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Question.
Uh, Member Koff has her hand raised. Go ahead, Member Koff. Member Koff, you muted still?
Okay, I, I was.
Hi, Joan.
Hi, I was wondering, uh, if you've ever, ever remembered thirty, forty years ago, that marginal men mostly would live in boarding houses, boarding houses, they would pay maybe ten dollars a night, and, and they were, you know, not doing so well, but they'd have a place they could just come in, and they weren't homeless. And I, when I think of these guys in the park, I think of a guy like that who's just, you know, needs a place to put his stuff at night and, and stuff like that, a simple place to cook a meal. And I, I wonder if, if we can move in the direction of sort of providing, I don't wanna call them flop houses because that sounds kind of bad, but you know, this kind of cheap, safe but cheap housing that would, you know, it just is a basic, and I don't mean it pejoratively. It's just a basic experience for people who just really don't have a, have a, they're not gonna be able to do the, the real thing of, of living well or something. Yeah, it's hard for them, anyway.
Joan, I, I, I can understand, you know, what the boarding houses were in the past, and you're correct. There would be ten bedrooms with the universal kitchen and bathroom, et cetera. Uh, we can look into it, but the question would be, would I have to maybe change some of our building codes? Because you cannot have more than, let's say, five unrelated individuals in one particular home. But these topics, yeah, but, but these are topics that, uh, we, we try to discuss because we are concerned. And I am concerned very much because you have heard before, you know, from Crane Park to Stadium Park to Mobiley Park to Manoa Park, all the parks where we have homeless encampments. I've brought this issue up in regards to the Department of Parks and Recreation in reference to our, guess what, our comfort stations.
Hmm.
And that's where they're all congregated to.
Well, they need that. They need that service, you see, of course.
Yeah.
It makes sense. But, uh, so, uh, you know, I was just thinking, and, and thinking that long-term housing for people who really are really affordable, way below the, what people, affordable, you know, just really
Yes.
bottom stuff. But at least it's a roof, and then they can build a life from there. That's all. If they can, or if not, then they stay there for a while.
Well.
But I, I think it's a safer, I'd like to see the people housed, you know, frankly.
Right, okay.
Focus on, yeah, that's my feeling. Thank you.
Thank you. No, thank you very much for your insights as far as boarding homes.
Okay, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Do we have any more comments from members of the board? Hearing and seeing none, we will go to members of the community. Um, let me see here. Uh, Mr. Fox, please go ahead.
Thank you, Calvin.
Yes, Robert.
I really appreciate all that you do. Um, I know this is almost an impossible task dealing with the homeless. I was very involved with the homeless, um, issues in Long Beach, California, before I retired here permanently to Honolulu. Uh, one of the things that we found which was serviceable, because the ACLU sued us that we couldn't enforce like picking people up off the beach unless we had a bed for them someplace, right? That, that's the statute that ACLU put together. What we did was, we used the FEMA model. When there's a flood in, uh, an area or a hurricane comes through Louisiana, the FEMA has these gigantic tents that are really, really great. You know, we have not utilized those in Honolulu, and they real. All I'm asking for is, let's comply with the law here. We can't pick anybody up unless we have a bed. I'll tell you what, it's an extremely cheap option, and you have a bed available. So we've met that criteria. Our cost factoring right now for building a one-bedroom unit in Honolulu is five hundred and sixty-one thousand, five hundred dollars. That's tremendously expensive, and there's a reason for it because public housing, you have to get a different kind of loan than, than normal housing. People are not gonna just donate five hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars to build a one-bedroom. So given that financial factor, I, I believe it's a, a much better option to go towards the FEMA method. If you could possibly bring these two council in committee and see what the other councilmembers would think about using the template that we use in Long Beach, I think that would be great. We went from thirty thousand homeless down to three thousand.
Hmm.
That's a tremendous success rate. P.S., side note here.
Yes.
Our wonderful Ian person who comes out of University Avenue.
Yes.
Attacked a girl across the street from my house. I live at twenty-twenty-two, right before Miley Way on University. And I'm on my balcony, so I'm watching this thing, so I yelled at the top of my lungs, "Get the hell off of that girl," you know? Well, he rushed across the street, right through traffic, took a bat, and broke both of my brake lights out of my car. So that cost me three hundred and sixty-one dollars plus shipping to get the brake lights brought in to replace my car. This is not like some passive individual who doesn't cause harm. Did I call the police? Of course I did. Did the police come out? No. It's a property damage issue. It's not like I was physically harmed. I was on my balcony way up above, right? But this guy's dangerous, and he certainly, I, I mean, I, this is like the fourth time I've seen him attack women on University Avenue alone. Um, I don't see him attacking any men, but I've seen women, and it's, I've seen women run around their cars trying to not be her armed by this guy. Um, he needs to be put away, seriously. I mean, I'm not talking because I think that, oh gee, let's put homeless people away. This is a dangerous individual. And we have enough witnesses in the neighborhood at this point in time to substantiate a charge. Now, if you want me to sign a citizen's arrest, I'm there for you. I will absolutely go to bat. The last issue I have, I'll holes. Uh, yes, there is a pretty bad street situation on Punaho going around the curve at No, uh, um, Noalani area, I think, No, Nevoa area, right?
Yeah, you were.
Yeah, it's really tough on your car. But the question I have, I, I go to folk dancing at Paradise Palms, you know, in the back of the valley. And the question is, who owns that road? Some people think that, uh, Daryl Wong owns the road. Except that the road goes to Manoa Falls, and it goes to Henry Lyons Arboretum, and it occurs to me that's gotta be public transportation at one point or another. But it's gotten to such a bad condition that somebody has to be responsible for repairing that road. I mean, it almost breaks your axle going up that, that road to Paradise Palms for me to go folk dance. So I don't know the answer to that one, and I was hoping that you could research that for me and find out who's the responsible party.
Robert, the staff and I have been doing that for the past, uh, six months now in regards to the Paradise Park Road. There has been, you know, decisions that says it's the city. There's been decisions that it's Mr. Wong. You know, at some point in time, this particular parcel of road mo, going up to the Lyons Arboretum and the falls, Manoa Falls, has to be addressed. And for me, with the support of our state legislature, maybe we could address it as a roads and limbo, Ellen. No, it's, it's a roads and limbo. If you're saying it's gonna be Mr. Wong, Mr. Wong is saying it's the state and the city that is utilizing it. And that's why we are trying to investigate it, and I have assigned it to, uh, Ms. Kao Shima to look into it, which is Melvia. So we are on top of it, but it's just been a difficult journey for me in determining if we have to go to court. Corporation Council will probably maybe get, will try to get a response from them, but if they say it's not the city's responsibility, whose responsibility is it, you see? Will it be Mr. Wong, which is all the way up as to Paradise Park? Because there is a demarcation line for all of us, if you look at the road itself. And that's where it's another issue as far as, once you pass that demarcation, is that city or is that private? And that's the issue that is before us today.
As a real estate broker, I look at this as an easement issue.
Okay, easement, yeah.
What we have here is public land, which is Manoa Falls, and we have another nonprofit, which is Lyons Arboretum. Both of which use that road as an easement for people to go to that place. I volunteer at Lyons Arboretum, you know? I've hiked the trails in Manoa Falls, although getting older, I don't do that as much as I used to. Thank you. But it occurs to me that since there's an easement involved here, um, there might be a financial responsibility, a, a shared responsibility
between ownership and the city in order to facilitate that. Just a thought. Thank you. That's all I got. Okay, but that's where we thought that it would be all parties who are involved in the utilization of the road. Because the other party that's involved too is the Border Water Supply, that has allowed that Hawaiian, uh, school to be there. And, you know, you've got the Department of Land and Natural Resources with the, uh, Manoa Falls, then you have the Lyons Arboretum, which is the University of Hawaii. Then you have the Catholic Church, which sold the property to Mr. Wong, et cetera. So there's about five or six different ownership of the overall Aho Pua'aha. But we'll follow up, Robert, and we're trying to get you involved. Nope, you're very welcome. Okay, Robert.
Thank you very much. Um, Mr. Jack James?
Thank you, Chair. Hi, Speaker.
Hi, hi, yeah, nice to see you. Fine, thank you.
Good. I'll be real quick. I've got two questions on an issue that you and I are at odds on, and I just wanted to ask them real quickly. Um, on June the seventh, when you had your last council meeting, um, had you voted up or down on the pay raises, the sixty-four percent pay raise for yourself and for the other council members? Would you have voted yes or no on that pay raise?
I would have voted, uh, yes on the pay raise, that, uh, I've come out publicly in strong support of it on behalf.
Thank you.
But the, the thought was that I wish it could have been incrementally, but it was at the recommendation of the salary commission.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I appreciate that.
You're very welcome, yeah.
The gross amount for those nine raises was three hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. Um, the legislative budget was voted on that evening. Were you aware at the time of the vote that that three hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars was not in the budget?
I, I, I don't, I don't have a line item on that particular budget, but, uh, there is budget for the overall staffing requirements of our staff in the office that we have, off, off, the Office of Council Services, the Auditor's Office, et cetera. All legislative offices are in that budget, yes.
Would it, would it surprise you to learn that the three hundred and eighty-eight thousand that represented the sixty-four percent increase for the nine members was not in the budget?
Well, I, I would be surprised if it's not in the budget, but if it is gonna be an appropriation, it can come out of the overall general fund bu, budget as a lump sum.
I won't, uh, I will not belabor it. It's not in the budget, and Chair Waters is going to move it from other line items, uh, to cover, uh, that deficiency. So some program in the budget that was approved on June seventh will suffer three hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars so that you nine can be compensated. That's my point.
Okay, and your point is well-taken, Jack, and I'm sorry, and I hope we don't do the cuts that you're alluding to as far as the different agencies of the legislative budget.
Mr. Speaker, thanks for your courtesy.
You're very welcome, Jack, and thank you for the questions that you have posed to me this evening.
Yes, sir.
Do we have any other comments in the community? Hearing and seeing no other comments.
Chair, you have one, uh, Resident Nakata has their hand up.
Oh, I did not see that somehow. Thank you. Uh, Mem, uh, Resident Nakata, please go ahead.
President, if you could unmute yourself, please.
Hello. Thank you, Chair. I just had to add to Patty, uh, Kauanu's comments on the monster home that's being built on Kalei Road. I'm a neighbor, and also my sister is in that same road, which is a one-car lane, dead end. And it's two monster homes. I don't see the roof connected. And I thought that it had to be, you know, if you build two-story, it had to have a ten-foot perimeter or something around the house. But I'm concerned about that because when my sister built her house twelve years ago, she was given such a hard time, you know, with bathrooms, when we had a house that had three bathrooms and the sewer line, everything. But this house, uh, was notified that they should, uh, cease.
Cease and desist.
Yes, but they've been continuing, and they, I think they were notified in June ninth, and they do that on the weekend and everything. And, um, that was my concern because what good was the letter to inform them? And I think that home has more than enough bathrooms that, I mean, like the other one that, um, was stopped in Kalihie had nine bathrooms. This house looks like has about that many bathrooms too. Can you look into it?
Yes.
Because the whole neighborhood is a very small neighborhood. We're all very concerned. And the other thing.
Is, we'll follow up a lot.
Okay, and the other thing is, are the cul-de-sac at the end of Kalei Road, it was being maintained by the University of Hawaii. However, I found out it's city, and the University of Hawaii said they will no longer clear that area. So then the neighbor right next door was doing the yard all the time because we don't want it to be so bushy that the homeless come in and they cut the fence and they go under the line to go to the university dorms. Can you, um, I made a request. I complained. I called several times, and nothing's been done about that. But that's the cul-de-sac that the refuse department turns around in.
Okay.
And one more thing, this is really amazing to me because when I had required, uh, asked the city council and Green Moncho was on there to find out if Kalei Road to find out if Kalei Road was city, state, or private. Because we wanted to put up two speed bumps because of all the speeding of the university students at that time. Of course, I fought with the university and we finally got them to enclose that cul-de-sac. I'm sorry. Okay, but I just wanted to know, because, uh, Elmer Kai said, no, it's a city road. So I'm, I wanna put up speed bumps because we have too much traffic for such a small little short road. We have too many old people and children, grandchildren. I don't wanna see speeding. So can you look into that? Because I'm sure now it's a city road, but I was told like twenty-five years ago, it was a private road.
Okay.
Thank you.
Miss Nakara, is it
Yes.
Possible to just email my office?
Sure. No, it wasn't your staff. I called the city for complaints and I called, um, uh, permitting.
Okay. But we'll follow up because I'm aware of Kalei, please. Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, at this time, I don't believe anybody else um, has their hands raised for, um, council members, say, council member, thank you so much for your time.
May I be here till nine o'clock?
Absolutely. Feel free to stick around.
Thank you.
At this point, I was just about to say, Ellen, we do have quorum. Um, Partner was saying that we, that, um, Bill needs to still do the, uh, oath of office at this time.
Correct. Correct. Uh, Member Lee, since you've just joined us, um, I'm going to pull up the oath of office. If you can unmute yourself and then, um, repeat after me that you can complete the oath of office and then we'll jump into, uh, filling of vacancies. Hey, Member Lee, are you ready?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully support.
That I will faithfully support.
The Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution laws.
Of the state of Hawaii.
Of the state of Hawaii.
The charters and laws.
The charter and laws.
Of the city and county of Honolulu.
The city county of Honolulu.
And the provisions of the neighborhood plan.
Of the provisions of neighborhood plan.
And will conscientiously and impartially
And will conscientiously and impartially
Discharge my duties.
Discharge my duties.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
As a member of the neighborhood board.
As a member of the neighborhood board.
To which I have been elected.
To which I've been elected.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay.
Here, we can, we can continue now.
Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, we'll move on, uh, going back on the agenda to filling of vacancies. We have, first off, one vacancy in sub-district two. Um, just for clarification purposes, Partner, can you just, can, how may I help you explain where sub-district two is? That way anybody who's in attendance can understand that as well.
That's a great question, Chair. Hold on just a second.
Elton, go ahead.
Chair, I can answer that. District two, of which I am a member, is, um, Eva of Manoa Stream above Kahaloa Street, and then perhaps Lowry. Oh, there it is, yes.
So, thank you very much for putting that map up. So, anybody who's in attendance who is not a member of the board who wishes to fill up that vacancy in sub-district two, uh, please let us know at this time. Hearing and see, oh, do we, uh, Clyde Lumen.
Hello, um, yeah, I would like to, uh, be considered for that position. I'm also on the, uh, uh, Manoa aboard Democratic District Twenty-two Board as well. And I was told that you really shouldn't do both, but if there is a shortage, that that it was okay to be on both.
Okay, um, this, uh, let's see, if you could privately chat, Partner, confirm your address, make sure that it's in the area.
I will, actually. Yeah, um, Mr. Lumen, uh, in order for me to vet your address, I need you to email me a copy of either your current driver's license, current state ID, and or, uh, most recent utility bill that has the address, um, that has the address that you that you reside at, so I can, I can vet your address with our, our street listing. Once I vet your address, then we can, um, we can continue on with, with the board vote and, and solidify you as a board member. But I need to, I need to vet your address first.
Okay, where should I email that to?
You're gonna email that to, to me, it's gonna be partner, P A R T N E R dot Akiona, A K I O N A, at honolulu.gov. And that also goes for anybody else on this meeting who is gonna be volunteering for either sub-district three or seats in sub-district four. If you guys, if there's anybody on the meeting interested in volunteering for other, um, positions, other vacancies on the board, you can go ahead and, and email me now.
Thank you for that, Partner. Uh, Diane, you had your hand raised first. Did you have a comment or anything?
I have a comment. Um, when I was living in Makiki and I moved to Manoa, I had to quit the Makiki Neighborhood Board to join the Manoa Neighborhood Board. You cannot be on two neighborhood boards.
He's not, he's not on a, Mr. Lumen, if you can clarify, please, are you on another neighborhood board or are you on a board for the Democratic Party?
Board for the Democratic Party, District Twenty-two.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Elton?
Chair, I don't know if we've had an official vote yet, so Mr. Lumen has self-nominated. And, uh, I think you can call for a vote and ask if there are any objections. No?
For filling, for filling of vacancies, once I vet his address, we need a board member to nominate him. And then see if there's any other, uh, volunteers for the vacancy. If not, it's, even though he's the only one running, we still need to do a roll call vote.
Thank you.
Thanks for the clarification on that, Partner. Uh, Dave?
Uh, thanks, uh, Chair. Um, I just wanted to ask to, um, Clyde Lumen, since, you know, you just introduced yourself to us and, I mean, the only thing, the only thing you kind of touched on was being involved with the political party locally. So I just wanted to ask, like, you know, I, I don't want to just, like, vote people in because of political party stuff. So, you know, like, tell us more about where you're from and what you wanna see on the board and what your interests are.
Uh, well, I just wanna be, um, a little more active in the neighborhood. I've lived here for, I think, about six years now. And, um, I have just interests in, you know, like, some of the road issues. I have issues over, uh, questions about, concerns about fireworks in the neighborhood. Um, street issues. The same question, I put the pall say that who owns that road and how, how are they gonna fix it? So I'm just concerned about the neighborhood and would like to be more a part of it. I live at the Manoa Gardens, uh, elderly apartments. Have a lot of seniors here, so I feel that we're a good representative of four seniors. There's a lot of seniors at Manoa. So I kinda wanna speak for them or be part of that.
All right, thank you.
Uh, just to make sure, uh, Member Boswell, did you have any comments or did Dave's, um, questions for, um, for Mr. Lumen?
Yeah, he, he covered it. I was gonna say the same thing if we could just have a little more info. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, Clyde, while you're still sending out information to Partner, I'm gonna open up the, um, while you're working on that, in the meantime, I'm gonna see if anybody's interested next up in sub-district three, so that way we can keep the process rolling along in the meantime. Are there anybody who's in attendance at tonight's meeting interested in the, in the two vacancies for sub-district three? Partner, if you can put up the map again, please, showing where the sub-districts are. Thank you. So on the screen right now, thanks to Partner, it's showing where sub-district three is located. And it looks to be along Manor, East Manoa, going down part of the way to University Avenue and along the su- Not sure what that street is actually down on that side, on the right, on the, um, right, right-hand side of that map over there. But, you know, but else is more familiar with street names, but I'll means jump in on this. But essentially, that's the map. If you're located within that area for sub-district three and you're interested in serving on the board, let us know at this time. Anybody? Hearing and seeing none. I'm gonna move on to sub-district four. Uh, sub-district four is, is bordering the freeway. Glenn, thank you for that. Kala Wile Street. Uh, but, um, sub-district four is in the university area, uh, along University Avenue and up to H-one freeway. So, anybody interested, um, Robert Fox?
Hello. I am interested in being on the board. Um, a little about me, I moved to the islands forty-six years ago. I, as a renter, thank you very much. I bought my home on University Avenue twenty-eight years ago and I've been living here ever since. I keep houses in California also. But I turned seventy in August second and I decided I was going to retire. So I am permanently here in Honolulu, yay! Uh, for the rest of my life, you know, I, I, today, I'm very proud to say that I got my Hawaii driver's license down in Kapalama. You know, they're very nice, very easy, went very quickly. I love that. Um, so I, I think I've submitted everything to Partner that he needed earlier today. Um, I've been involved in neighborhood associations for decades in California. And I understand the purpose of them. Uh, mostly advisory as to, you know, give our opinions from the community for our, uh, representatives to take with them and understand, okay, there's this opinion, that opinion. What is the, what is the support from the community for the various issues that come on? And I think I'm pretty good at cooperating with other people. Um, I know how to get things done if needed. Um, and I look forward to working with some of our wonderful people on the board. I know some of you all already and I, I can't say how thrilled I am to know you. And, uh, hi, Linda. Fabulous people who, who have been very kind to me over the years. And, um, anyway, that's me, so hopefully you'll say yes and I'll get to work with you all.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else from the area of sub-district four who is interested in serving on the neighborhood board? Hearing and seeing none at this time. Um, the vacancies are still gonna be open, so, um, we'll keep, oh, Ellen?
Um, since Robert Fox has already been vetted and he was on our board at the last board meeting, I make a nomination, I'd like to make a motion to nominate, um, Robert Fox to the board and maybe there's a second.
We don't see daylight second.
Thank you for that. Just to wanna clarify though, Partner, were you able to get all that information from Robert Fox? So that way we could do this, um, we can do this vote.
From, from Mr. Fox, yes, I, I received it earlier today.
Perfect. Sounds good. Um, so.
If we, if we want, if you want, Chair, what we can do is, we can go through the process, um, for Mr. Fox, get him squared away. If I don't, and then actually continue on in the agenda. Once Mr. Lumen, um, gets me his, his information and I'm, I'm able to vet him, then we can just quickly, um, you know, if, if there is a nomination from the board, of course. But once we do all that, you know, get the nomination, vote, and then see if, see if he's voted onto the board. Um, once he does turn in our information, we don't need to necessarily, um, just sit and, sit and wait.
Do they have to take the oath of office?
Yes, they do.
Uh, Clyde, you had something to say along those line, uh, regarding that?
Yeah, I sent that email a few minutes ago, so you should have it.
I, I haven't, I haven't received it yet, but I will, I will be on the lookout for it.
Okay.
So while we're working on that, um, Diane, did you have something regarding the vote for Robert Fox?
Aren't we supposed to discuss it first before we vote?
Um, that we could, I mean, I believe there technically does have to be a discussion since it is, um, a motion that's seconded. Um, so there is a discussion at this time, but, um, do you have anything to say on this matter, Diane?
Yes, um, I, I don't think that Robert Fox should be on the board. Uh, I was talking to the police. I'm on the board. He was not. And he disrespectfully told me that I, what I was requesting was ridiculous compared to what he had to say, and he was not on the board. I think that should be in consideration, that he's not very considerate. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other comments? Hearing and seeing none. We will do the roll call vote for, um, having Robert Fox take up one of the vacancies on sub-district four. Partner, can you do the roll call vote, please?
Yep. Thank you, Chair. Uh, members, um, when I call your name, if you're voting in favor of Mr. Fox, please say his last name, Fox. If you're not in favor, you can vote no, or if you're unsure, you can, um, abstain. Okay, uh, so here we go. Member Watson.
Fox.
Member Boswell.
Fox.
Member Nagaji.
Fox.
Member Fukumoro.
Fox.
Member Lee. Member Lee, your vote? You might need to unmute.
Yeah, he's muted.
Yeah. Member Lee, if you can unmute and, um, let us know your vote, please. Okay, we'll come back to you. Uh, Member Ka.
Fox.
Member Chong?
No.
Member Koano?
Fox.
Okay, and Chair Zane?
Foxed.
Okay, and then one more time, um, Member Lee, your vote, please. Member Lee, your vote?
He indicates by using her hand.
He could if he was on screen, but he's not on screen right now.
Hold on, I have his number. I can try calling him.
Okay, well, we, you, you can't talk to him and get his vote. It can't be by proxy.
Okay, I'll just tell him to
His, his choice, his choice is either to do it vocally over audio, thumbs up or thumbs down on screen or through the chat.
Anybody have any music for us to listen to?
I wish. Seeing is how it's going to be put on to a little.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can wait. We can wait for Member Lee's vote. However, based on membership. Member Fox or Mr. Fox would need a unanimous vote in order to get onto the board. And that's not the case since Member Chong already voted no.
Hmm, I see. Well, thank you for clarifying that, partner.
I mean, we can, I mean, unless. Unless Member Chong is going to change her vote to affirmative or in favor of Mr. Fox. Waiting for, uh, waiting for Mr. Lee. Is kind of a moot point right now.
Thank you for clarifying that. Uh, in which case.
Did you get the email from the other guy?
I have not yet. Member Watson?
We're gonna, okay, in which case, while we're waiting for the email to get received by partner. Um, just for the record, apparently because we need unanimous and all nine votes to say yes. The vote to affirm Mr. Fox as a developed one of the big seasons of district four has been um, has has failed. So we'll move on on the agenda. Um, and seeing as how we do not have a quorum at this time with member, uh, Member Lee. Have uh, not in a presence, we're gonna go back to um, reports. To try to kill fill up some more of this time as, um, I believe Kim Sparland was on uh, earlier. Kim, are you still there?
Good evening, yes, I'm here, thank you.
Kim, go ahead.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Um. I've shared in the chat a couple of things. One is the mayor's newsletter for July. Um, so you can see all of the happenings here at the the city that we're working on lots of. Um, terrific things happening in various departments. I think everybody is very much aware if. Uh, you are not living under a rock that we were able to effectively and efficiently launch skyline on Friday. So we're really excited and really proud about that. It was a multi-department effort. Um, it was many, many years and many administrations in the making, so we, you know, we can take credit for opening it, but was a lot of work that went into that, so. That is there for sure. Um, couple of other things that are going on, uh, just a lot of community meetings, so we want to say thank you to all of you that did come out. When we were doing the town halls around the island, um, and those that did come to Alawai, we wanna wanna thank you for that. Also want to say thank you to councilmember Se and his staff for working with us for an in-person. Session that we're gonna be doing again at Alawai for the rental and utility relief program. Um, we recognize that not everyone has access to the internet, and so we felt it was really important to leave some of those. Um, some of that funding open and some applications open for in-person events and really get to those. That really need it and don't have access in the way that most of us are used to. So want to thank councilmember Se and again his staff. Um, for helping us organize that, um, and that will be coming up uh, later this month. Our business recovery grants are uh, out on the street. Um, five point four million have been issued to small businesses so far, and that we expect by the end of this month. Uh, the rest of the ten million would be awarded. Lots of other fun things going on at the zoo with a rhino baby being born, so. Uh, life, life, whole circle of life there. It's really exciting. Um, and then the city is conducting a Vision Zero survey, so check out the newsletter with with some more details in there. Um, um, remember Koano, I did note, and I will follow up with Director. Takiuchi Apuna again, because you know, when I did speak with her, they did send folks out, so I'm sorry to hear that there's still some confusion. But I did drop into the chat that anytime you want to request an investigation, there's an online form that you can do that and then they'll come out. I think you saw that they were pretty responsive when we, when we did that, so I'm sorry to hear that you made some phone calls and. Um, didn't get a response, but I'll let her know that so that we can work on that as well. And then I can circle with councilmember Se and his staff on that as well, and I apologize that my voice has decided to um, take the evening off, it sounds like, so. Um, just wanna uh, I guess, let you know, I I have been listening, um. And hearing, hearing the issues, taking notes, but want to open it up as well if there's anything else that you guys wanted to share directly to me.
Members of the board? Any comments for Kim? Ellen, go ahead.
Thanks, Kim. Uh, again, I don't know what we can do about. Especially the two homeless guys at Manoa District Park, the flute player and Ivan. And whatever, something has to happen, because Ivan is a real scary guy. Um, and the flute player has just moved into the scorekeeper's booth and that's not okay. I mean. You know, it's not a tiny home, yeah? So, something has to happen and I just hear that. Nothing can happen, so it's really concerning to the residents and the children and. Summer fun going on up there and it's just terrible. I I I want you to be able to help. I want the mayor to do something.
I hear you. I, 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 I wish I had an answer for you. It's definitely a priority of the mayor, and there's many conversations that he had. I think councilmember Se was mentioning the. The challenges um, with jurisdiction and with legal and civil rights and those kind of things and um. I I know it's not a good answer. I know it's hard um, to hear that month after month, but I I can assure you that the conversations are being had.
Uh, thank you very much. So Member Lee has returned to the chat as well. Partner, clarification purposes, did we get mem- uh, Mr. Lumen's uh, information yet?
Not yet.
Thank you very much, um.
Hello. I figured out the problem. I wasn't wearing my glasses, so I uh, was put the wrong email in, so I'm doing it again right now.
Okay, okay, thank you.
In the meantime, uh, do you also wanna um, just for the record, also uh, get. Uh, Member Lee's vote on um, regarding Mr. Fox?
Yeah, so Member Lee, um, in regards to adding. In regards to adding uh, Mr. Robert Fox. Um, into sub district four. We need, we need your vote. Either you're in favor, if you're in favor, say his last name, Fox. If not, you can vote no, or if you're unsure, you can abstain.
Fox.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, um. Tom, Mr. Want to say something about this? Tommy muted.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Uh, just a point of parliamentary uh, order. Uh, and that is, uh, while it would be nice to include uh, Member Lee in the vote. Uh, the bottom line is, uh, you had called the vote, uh, you had continued on to other matters on the agenda. Uh, therefore, the polite way of saying it is, Mr. Lee was excused from the vote. He did not participate. Uh, I do not believe it is in order uh, to go back in order to add for the record uh, his vote or whatever. Obviously, this matter will come up again at some other time, uh, but I think it is parliamentary completely inappropriate. Uh, to go back and try to fill that in, especially as you uh, did proceed to other matters on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that, Tom. Appreciate the uh, um, the clarification and also um, the correction on that, so. Um, partner, if you can note that as well, um, since we're still waiting on, um. Elton, I'm sorry, did you have something to say on this? I was just gonna go back to, while we're still waiting on partner to receive. Uh, Mr. Lumen's information, we're gonna go back to reports and I I go back to Kim.
Yes, I'm, I'm commenting on um, Tom's comment, which is that um. Because Member Lee was not there, we did not have quorum, so uh, that vote was ineffective. Because we had eight votes for that vote and um, so there was no quorum.
Which, um, the question is, do we have, do we retake the vote at this time? I think it's. But because uh, it wasn't clear what ha- um, regarding that. Partner, Tom?
You don't, you don't necessarily need. You don't necessarily, like Tom said, the, we've moved on from the matter for one part of it. The second part of it is. Is regard, is for, for Mr. Fox, he would need a unanimous vote. But Member Chong, during the vote, Member Chong has already voted no. So even though, so. Even, even with that being said, even if we had quorum with nine. The vote, it it doesn't, it doesn't pass because he didn't receive quorum vote.
Thank you for like, thank you for clarifying that. In which case, we will, um, partner, let us know when you receive the information from Mr. Lumen.
You can, Chair, you can, if, once, once Kim is done, if you want to return. I'll let you know once I get Mr. Lumen's information, but once Kim is done, you can go back to election of officers. Continue with, with board business.
Thank you very much. Uh, Kim, um, I believe we're going to go back to you on the agenda and. So anybody else have any comments for Kim Spalding? Members of the community, any comments for Mayor Belong.
Chair saying this is Member Koano.
Yes, go ahead.
I'm a Henry's, I just wanted to say thank you to Kim for her time and her help in the months of housing, I will continue to work with her and councilman. Stay in his office, so thank you very much, Kim. Appreciate your time.
Well, thank you for bringing to our attention, and then, again, I'm sorry, I thought it was taken care of, but we'll, we'll track it down.
Yeah, it's not his fault, it's just difficult to, he called me when I'm in a meeting and I call him, he's unavailable, so it's very difficult to connect.
Thank you for that. Members of the community, anybody else for Ms. Spalding and Mayor Belong Johnny's office? Hearing and seeing. Hello, somebody else? I think that's somebody's Apple phone going off. At which point I do not see any other comments or um, hands raised. Thank you for, thank you for pointing out. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm just wondering, Kim, are we gonna get to see the numbers of ridership for rail anytime soon? Um, after this weekend that was, you know, the big uh, grand opening, are we going to get to see how um, how the numbers play out? Uh, you know, during the work week.
I, yes, we can, we can definitely um, make sure the DTS gets those out.
Okay, uh, let me see here. Any, any else? I want to do a clean sweep on this list over here, make sure I don't have anybody else. Hearing and seeing none. Lynn, thank you for your time. And then we'll move on to state monthly reports. First up, we will have on the agenda, um. Well, actually, I think I saw Representative Garrett on the chat. Is Representative Garrett here?
Chair, I'm here. How are you doing?
Thank you very much, Representative. Go ahead.
Sorry, didn't want to jump the line, but I think the gov's rep may be on. As well.
Yes, she is.
Yes, I'll just uh, wait my place. Yep, I think Francine is on, so I'll just uh, defer to her.
Okay, I usually want to try to defer to those who members, um, elected officials who actually are in attendance. Um, but in which case, if you're willing to wait a little while, I'll go in order then. Representative Greens, uh, Francine? Sorry, Governor Green, Representative, that's my apologies.
Aloha, everyone. Thank you, Representative. Aloha, everyone. Again, I'm Francine Murray from Hoi Community Development Authority. This evening, I'm representing the office of the governor. I shared the governor's July newsletter in the chat. Governor Green announced yesterday they're going to expand affordable housing. And they made a commitment to affordable housing in a bigger way than we've seen in any other state in the nation. They're expanding by over twelve thousand units throughout the state, mostly rentals. Ten thousand of those will be new affordable housing units and two thousand are redeveloped or refurbished units. This project is called Kalae Momi redevelopment project, and it will replace and create. Housing units for the extremely poor and those in need. We realize that there are many income levels that are in need of housing here in Hawaii. That's why there's a five hundred million dollars in the state. Budget for developing affordable housing and infrastructure, which is a top priority of this administration. Other priorities of the governor include expanding and improving our healthcare services. Preserving our islands for current and future generations and educating our Kiki. In the newsletter, it highlights some of these priorities. He also goes over. Some um, fraud alert for Medicare and how to prepare for hurricane. So if you want to check out the newsletter, it's attached in the chat. Are there any questions for me to take back to the office of the governor?
Comments from the uh, from the board? Hearing and seeing.
You got Patty's. Patty has her hand up.
Thank you for that. I don't know why Patty, uh, the hands are coming up, my thing. Patty, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Hi, I, my question is, I, I think it's great that the governor is focusing on housing need, which is. Really important for our community, but I want to make sure that they're not just going to set bill, bill, bill and not really. Take their time to um, connect with the community, sure that this is the right project. And not skipping over things so that, you know, the governor and his administration can say, I'm fulfilling my, my campaign promise. I, I want. I mean, I'm hoping we want this to be a well thought plan and not just remedy down and just say that. I, you know, the governor can say, I'm building all these homes, this is my accomplishment. So I hope that, you know, he really have a good team to work on this and really think about this and work with the community at large. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll take that comment back to the office. Anything else?
Do we have, oh, Ms. Watson, go ahead.
Thank you. It's gonna be, uh, what he's proposing is gonna be built on state lands, is that correct?
Any other comments or questions? Members of the board? Opening up now to members of the community. Members of the community have any comments for Governor Greens representative? Hearing and seeing none. Trying to scan through this list to make sure I get, make sure I don't miss anybody. Nobody's hands are up, oh. Dylan?
I just have a quick question. Thanks for joining us tonight. Um, I was wondering, um. Will you be the representative or the person joining us every. Um, neighborhood board, or you're just here because uh, your subject area coincides with the governor's, um. Recent announcements? I'm just curious. Thanks.
For now, yes, thank you. Thank you for your question. For now, I've been assigned to attend monthly. Thank you.
Thank you. In which case, looking forward to seeing you again next month.
Yes.
Here, hearing and seeing no other comments from the community at large. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on on the agenda, Senator Fukunaga.
Oh, uh, Chair, I can speak to this. Um, so Senator Fukunaga's OM, uh, office manager was on here briefly at the start of the meeting, but. Uh, he sent me a message and he said he had technical issues, so he had to, he, he got kicked off the meeting. And he would like the board to know that um Senator Fukunaga's office will have the report delivered next week.
Sounds good. Um, moving on then to Representative Garrett. Thank you for your patience, Representative. Go ahead.
Of course, I appreciate the courtesy, Chair. Um, okay, so first of all, I hope everyone had a, a safe and happy fourth last, uh, last night. Um, the main thing I wanted to plug was the community newsletter. I'm sorry, the, uh, the summer newsletter our office issued. Hopefully, most of you folks, if not all, got it in your mail a few weeks ago. Um, you know, the highlights there are, are the um. The dollars we were able to bring back to the district, really highlighting the CIP for our area schools, also very successful in getting um. Money to support the nonprofits in our district. So if you would uh click on that in the inset or the inside pages two and three, there's a pretty robust listing. Of the money we were able to bring back to the district. Um, also on the front page, there, there is a QR code uh for a community survey. I think at this point, um, uh, it's probably about thirty or forty responses, not quite enough to give a valid statistical sample about. Where the community feels on these issues. So I encourage you to please uh complete that survey. It only takes a few minutes. There's maybe a dozen or. Um, questions or so. Um, and then that way we can kind of figure out, you know, where the pulse of the community is on some of these issues that we'll be discussing in the future. Uh, there was um some discussion about Paradise Park and the road that leads up to the Lion Arboretum. I know Councilmember Say was speaking about it. So, you know, we did speak to DLNR recently, specifically the Division of Forestry and Wildlife, DOFA. Actually have a meeting with them tomorrow to talk about some Allahuai watershed issues. Um, but they are gonna go ahead and do a temporary fix. They're basically gonna buy a bag of Quick Reet and just fill the thing up as a temporary measure. I know. The community, they're very patient. Um, we have a Lion Arboretum volunteer who contacts our office routinely to complain about it. So. We talked to DLNR, um, you know, we'll just ask for forgiveness later if someone raises an issue, but they are gonna go in there and fill that. Um, the terrible pothole that's there. So that is one little interim fix and we'll figure out, as Councilmember Say said, um. About the longer term fixer, because there are some jurisdictional questions about who exactly owns the road. Um, the other issue I wanted to mention too, some of you folks who had nothing better to do a few Thursday nights ago may have. Seen uh Insights on PBS Hawaii where we discussed the Allahuai Flood Control Project where I was a guest panelist. Um, the main takeaway there is the Army Corps is um falling a little behind schedule with their draft report. On their proposal, you folks may know that they're basically looking at building six foot walls um along the length of the Allahuai Canal. They are, is a flood control measure. They are also proposing these in our district. Um, six foot walls down by Woodlon Bridge, which was where, um, you know, the stream jumped the banks back in two thousand and four in that terrible flood. They are also proposing walls down by Koali Road, so think of the area behind the UH dorms. This is where the. Manoa Stream and the Palolo Stream uh merge. Um, but again, the details are pretty light to this point. I know this board has stayed on top of this issue for several months, if not years now. Now that you folks have new members, I would certainly encourage you folks to reach out and see if they'd come and make a presentation on the latest. They are saying that the report is now going to be issued in August or September. Initially, they were targeting July, but again, that has fallen. Um, a little bit behind schedule. So, you know, until we get that report. Um, I think we're kind of in a wait and see pattern. We're not really gonna get the details we need to figure out what the actual impact to the community is. Or the price tag for this project, because right now it's kind of in flux as well. Um, so just in the interest of time, I'll stop there and see if anyone has any questions for me. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Representative. Any members of the board have any questions? Uh, Member Bolso, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Um, Representative, was there any discussion for Hokulani? I saw in your um. You know, update mailer thing that they're. Going to be repaving and it was a rather high price tag. I'm just curious, was there any discussion since that has. Fairly low traffic considering where it is and the overall enrollment there for doing.
About the elementary school?
Yes.
Yeah, so they put in a request to repaint their exterior buildings and then their parking lot um is in pretty bad shape. So they requested some money to do that as well. Um, it is relatively small school, um, you know, although they did win the Blue Ribbon Award, it is a very high performance school. So this is down by Conneby Park for those of you who aren't familiar.
Right, um, I'm aware. My, my question was, since it's a um, a rather low traffic area though, was there any discussion on doing? Um, a more environmentally friendly, like repaving, instead of just repaving with asphalt, which. Needs to be redone every few years and is not the best. Was there any discussion of doing like permeable pavers or anything else?
We didn't have that request from the school, but I can certainly follow up with the Department of Education, because I think it certainly makes sense to look at those kind of um solutions rather than. Yeah, like you said, just the asphalt, because it doesn't have a very long shelf life and it does seem like we need to go in there every few years. But yeah, I can talk to the um facilities folks of the DOE. To see what some of the options might be.
Okay, yeah, I think um since, yeah, I think, you know, overall traffic level is a consideration, but. I know I'm familiar with that school and where they are and it's a fairly small population. And so I think that. Rather than doing this ad nauseam, you know, in perpetuity, repaving, this might be a really great. Opportunity to look into something like that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for the suggestion.
Thank you very much. Any members of the board have any comments, questions? Representative Garrett? Members of the community, any comments, questions? Making sure, writing down the list again. I do not, oh, yes, uh, Linda, go ahead.
Thanks again. Uh, I just wanted to thank Andrew for, for his uh survey. I encourage everybody to uh respond to it. I think that would give them a good idea of where we, we sit as a community. It took me just a couple of minutes to do it and uh I think it's important, uh, you know, that he has asked us. To respond to it and I, I, I feel we should do it. Um, and I thank you for that, Andrew.
No, thank you, Linda, for that. And also, um, you know, uh, we know there are some people in the, in the district who might not have computers or cell phones. Um, so if that's the case, if anyone could just contact our office, we do have hard copy versions as well too that we'll mail out right away. And then, um, there's always a traditional. Paper and pen method too, so that's another option as well. But thanks for the plug, Linda.
Any other community questions or comments for Representative Garrett? Hearing and seeing none, Representative, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, guys. See you next month.
See you next month. Moving on to Elmer's, and before Elmer, uh, one quick comment. I've noticed in the chat that there are questions about community concerns. These meetings could go until ten o'clock. So, that being said, there is still time. We're just, we've just been going around the agenda quite a bit because of uh concerns with the board, and this is our first meeting for the new board. That being said, we will try to get to community concerns as soon as possible. Elton, you had your hand raised real quickly?
Sorry, I had to unmute myself. Um, Chair, uh, are we gonna have our elections this, today?
We will try, uh, we will try, but um, that can be brought up at the end of the agenda. Just because we do have, we do, are still waiting for uh Mr. Lumen's um information uh to be sent over to Partner, I believe, as well. So, um, and Elmer is on, is on stream right now. So we will try to address his, his, um, his presentation first. And then follow up, see, and then again, we just keep trying to, we want to make sure we have all. Um, volunteer members sign in first before we do any voting for positions on, so that we all votes accounted.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we're moving on to um Elmer Kai.
Hello, Chair, hello, members. Thank you very much for your patience. Um, I have a, I provided a, a report from the last. What we've been going through for the last several, several months at the University of Hawaii. It's in the chat as well as I think I emailed to members. Um, let me just give you some highlights of, of my report. Um, let me talk about Saint Francis School. Um, the University of Hawaii did make an effort to try to acquire a university, um, Saint Francis. Um, however, um, we did not have the sufficient funds to, I'll be the person that she is in escrow now. As for the new parking development plans, um, Member Watson is, um, always indicated about the concern about. Additional parking. We actually are trying to make an effort within the next year or so. Uh, we do have a plan within the new PRU. Uh, permit to try to kind of develop some um additional parking on campus. Um, this parking will be designated for all of the staff and so that we can open up the lower campus for all students. Uh, so we want to make sure we can uh, uh, attend to that. Um, the Noah Project Site, which is on a corner of. East West Center Road and Dole is across from um. Beer Hall. Um, we are about to get ready to um move on that. We are making sure that we can get all of the proper permits in place. Again, that is another requirement that we need to work with the Department of. Planning and permitting at the city level. That particular uh housing unit will provide. More additional housing for students as well as faculty and staff if they, if they need it. Hopefully, we can open up more um. More housing within the community so that they can, we can have our students more on campus. The other company we want to talk to is, is a bit for um the, the old PBS building, which is on the. It's on those street next, right across the street from um the Russian as well as. Um, the. The Children's Center. That building, we, we actually have work in progress to actually start to kind of um. Work on. Demolishing that particular building. It does have some issues regarding asbestos and so on, so we want to make sure we can cover that. Um, and open that space up. The Manoa Children's Center, we actually are gonna move them also. Um, they will be moving to the new north um uh housing area, uh, once everything is set up. So everything will be more on campus. Um, for, for Member Kauanu, we actually have a start date on the new calendar. Um, lower campus calendar, which is August fourteenth. We will actually start putting the, all of the events that's happening on lower campus on our main website. So that, because we do have a lot of events that are happening on lower campus. Um, and also next month, um, my report will be very shorthanded because I mean, actually. Um, the new athletic director, Craig Angelos, um, Timmy Chang and Ramin Amos San, Santo. Um, Rabin Amo will be my guest for next month's meeting. Um, so that, you know, I don't have to report. I wanted you to, you should introduce you them, introduce you guys to them. And also get ready for our new um upcoming year. So that, this year's first game is actually on a Friday for football. It's on September first, in which we are actually going through a lot of trying to figure out how to kind of maneuver that. And we're still working on that. Part of the, part of the idea is actually closing the campus, part of the campus down. Maybe moving some of our courses online for that particular portion of it. Um, but also Coach Chang as well as Craig, um, Athletic Director. Angelo says, actually, I wanted to kind of open up the campus now, since the, that, that we are not. Covered by um the pandemic, to really do a better opportunity for people to visit the campus and so on. We actually have a lot more areas to do offsite camp, offsite parking. So that will be a bigger concern. So we have a lot more areas where we can have people, actually, we will bring them in either through a shuttle or bus. So we can do that. But outside of that, Chair, I am open for questions.
Thank you very much. Members of the board, any questions? Member Chong?
Yes, uh, our, I'm reading about your, um, the email you sent us. Uh, the property that the University Laboratory School is on. Did you guys go through all the process already? Don't you have to go through, you know, environmental and permitting? All that before you can tell them that they, they cannot be on that property?
Okay, so actually, we, we're not, we're not, we're not doing anything on that property, so we haven't started anything like that. We have talked to the campus already. Um, and we have ag- agreed with them that, you know, when we, when we have the time, we're actually gonna. Maybe do some work on it, but right now they're not moving anywhere. They, they're not moving anywhere. We're not doing any processing. They, we have an open communication with the school. So yeah, once we do that, we have to go to the whole process over again. We have to come in front of the community. We have to go to permitting, but we're not even there. We're not even looking at that campus moving at all.
Okay, because that's not, sort of, it sounds like you guys are ready to go.
No, we're not. That's, that's, that's all what is my report. My report says we are talking with them. We have no plans for that area.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Member Bolso.
Thank you, Chair. Elmer, do you have any um information that you can share on who did get the Saint Francis? Please, you said they're in escrow. Do you know who that is or what they're planning on doing with the site?
Actually, we don't. It is a private owner. Unfortunately, you know, they don't have to share anything with us about that area.
We love to. Might have more inside info.
Yeah, I wish we did, but yeah, we don't. Sorry about that.
That's okay. Thank you.
Member Kauanu.
Thank you, Chair. Hi, Elmer. Um, so my question related to the football game, right? It's gonna have more seats, which means hopefully there'll be more people attending.
Hopefully.
And then they go back to the parking situation where, how we're gonna accommodate that, because the last season where. The Stan Sherup and the multiple events going on, there is like no parking at all. How will you folks have any plans at all?
Actually, we do. Um, and that's a good question, um, Patty. Um. So that, you know, I'll, I'll be quite honest, the, because the football team. Has a season they had for last several years. Over the time. Quite honestly, the, the parking lot was very empty, kind of, kind of empty based on the season. I'm not sure if that's gonna occur this year. Um, but yes, we actually bet, made a better effort to, to, to utilize our. Fellow campuses for additional parking, so that we, they can actually park there. Um, we are actually looking out to other committee, um, entities that if they want to kind of build it, and we actually will develop. A, a shuttle so they can bring people in and so on. You are right, when there are multiple events. So football is the only one where there's no, nothing possibly happening on campus, nothing. There is not even an event on campus. However, when there is volleyball, softball and so on, it's a uniqueness because volleyball brings in sometimes a bigger crowd than. Our football. And so you are right, and we trying to make a, especially a, a better effort. To ensure that we can work with the um, uh, with the police department and, um, remember Chong is very, been very. Clear about that, so we are making a better effort to make sure we can work with them.
Okay, great. Yeah, just want you folks to keep that in mind as you move along your plan to expand the stadium. And I definitely hope, you know, everybody will come to cheer for our, for our team. Um, on a related note. Yeah, on a related note, um, I think some other resident might bring up this, this item. Um, I don't know if you're aware of, there is gonna be a um, two hundred units. Uh, development's gonna be built right outside of Kalili Row on YI.
I saw that.
Pahoa. And um, we're a little concerned about that because as it is, right, traffic going through that row is rather difficult. And if that, I don't know, I, I don't know if that's status, if it's already approved, it's just going through. Then it's gonna be a problem as well when all those student coming out, the residents, uh, the faculty that comes out through there. Um, it could be a very dangerous situation where the other side can cross over to the freeway and people, folks from the other side would try to cross over to King Street, so. Um, I would invite the university to participate and if there's gonna be some type of a discussion regarding traffic control.
Okay.
With the DOT.
Absolutely.
Just want to make sure. I don't know if you're aware of it or not, but.
I'm not sure, um, I, I will check with our office that handles that and see, you see if they got already informed about that area. But we are aware of the new projects coming in.
Okay, yeah, I, I think that's part of Moiliili Makali District and I believe Ian Ross may be on the meeting and. Um, I was planning on attending the next meeting there. I don't know when the schedule is, so to learn more about that. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, moving on to the community, I see Tom Heinrichs and it's, oh, sorry, um, Councilmember, uh, Say.
Robert, can I be just very brief? Patty, you know, the hearing, not the hearing, but the. Meeting will be tomorrow evening for the Moiliili Makali Neighborhood Board. So that developer.
Great.
Presentation tomorrow.
Oh, great thing. I, I will be attending.
It, it's on their agenda. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember, Tom.
Okay, thank you, uh, thank you Calvin for that one, uh, yes, the meeting tomorrow starts at six thirty PM. Uh, on Webex, so check the Neighborhood Commission Office website, uh, and you'll be able to join in on that. Um, secondly, again, one of those interesting things uh is, uh, and correct me on this one, partner. Uh, but that particular area of Old Wai Lai Road, I believe is part of Diamond Head. Uh, Kapoulu Saint Louis Heights Neighborhood Board uh for that weird location. But it is a situation where uh all three of the neighborhood boards because of joint issues in that area. Uh, including uh as Elmer and I have talked for years over that area of Dole Street. Uh, where the dormitories are and stuff, uh, again, on the the east side of Manoa Stream. It's Diamond Head Kapoulu Saint Louis Heights Neighborhood Board, which kind of throws you for a bit of a curve. But again, it shows the importance of making sure that uh for something that's right on the borderline uh like that. It needs hopefully to be presented to all the boards, but so far the only one that has it on the agenda. And unfortunately, it's July, it's the initial convening meeting uh is Makali uh Moiliili uh tomorrow. Uh, if I may Chair, just two other quick things uh to note for Elmer, uh, Elmer, if you've got any comments on. Uh, the very soon official opening of Rise. At the former Atherton Y MCA site at Metcalf University. Um, and then uh the other one is uh if there's been any uh other very general conversations recently, if you will. Uh, with Kamehameha Schools, uh, I think it was just last week reported in the Honolulu Star advertiser. Uh, was some plans, uh, uh, still fairly low key uh plans for the uh area by University Avenue and Coin Street. Uh, it's still not the full extent of what has been talking uh talked about for quite some time. Uh, for the full redevelopment of Pux Alley, uh, but again, everything is way behind schedule due to pandemic, et cetera. But if there's been any further general conversations with Kamehameha Schools, since that area has always been talked about as a potential. University town, if you will.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, um, thank you for the questions, um. Um, yes, let me talk a little bit about Rise or the Atherton House Entrepreneur Program. Um, it is set to open August twenty twenty three, it will have about three hundred seventy four bed beds. Um, it is, again, it's not a U University of Hawaii property and it's not owned by University of Hawaii, but we. Not the University of Manoa will benefit, but it's open to all University of Hawaii students. Um, so all of KCC or any other schools, if you wanna be there. We are starting to accept applications, or not we, on the Rise WWW dot Rise Manoa dot com. Is there side to accept applications for that. Uh, but again, it's scheduled to open August as early as early August twenty twenty three. Um, as for your second question, Tom, yes, you are right, um, Commandment School did reach out to us regarding the the redevelopment of the area. There's they're targeting two more years um to actually start doing that, so a good example. The Moili summer fest will probably be the last year of having it at that site will probably be in next year. And then after that, we'll they will have to find another site, but that development also includes those properties. Right across, all right outside of our gate, which is commandment property. Um, so you are correct, I don't know the actual time schedule, hopefully they can um chair, the new chair can invite Commandment Schools to come up and do a. A report to the Manoa Neighborhood Board. Yeah.
Thank you very much, um, next we have uh Mr. Robert Armstrong.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I appreciate your recognition, um, I wanna make one comment before I am here. And that is reading the Neighborhood Board Plan, um, I think an error has been made, uh, section two or excuse me, uh. Subtitle two, chapter fourteen point one oh four C. Uh, in regarding membership vacancies, the majority vote of all the members to which the board is entitled shall be necessary. To appoint an individual of requisite qualifications to fill any vacancy. There is no such rule and that's why I looked it up because it didn't ring correct to me um of a unanimous vote. Uh, so uh hopefully you can fix that, the reason why I'm talking is indeed on the Neighborhood Board and its plan. As I have indicated as.
I'm sorry.
Neighborhood Boards.
Mr. Armstrong, Mr. Armstrong. I was gonna hold you off on that moment cuz we are still with member with Mr. Elmer Kai and University of Hawaii. Do your comments have anything to do with the University of Hawaii? If not, we can save your comments for community concerns later on, which will be addressed, but at this time it is.
I thought that's where we were.
No, we are on still in University of Hawaii.
Okay, since he was later on the agenda, I'm confused, I apologize.
Yes, um, again, I, no, um, that's fine, we've been taking the agenda out of order for various reasons because the representatives are here to speak on their organizations. And but we will reach community concerns later on, so please hold off your comments until that time. Um, again, this is only for University of Hawaii, or is there anybody here, any of the comments for University of Hawaii? And Elmer Kai.
David.
David. You're still muted. David.
I'm sorry, are we gonna move on to community concerns after Elmer?
Uh, yes, we can't move on to community concerns unless I hear anything about.
No, I'll wait, I'll wait.
All right, are there any other concerns for Elmer Kai and University of Hawaii? Hearing and seeing none.
Oh, we have a video. End up from Nakata.
Why I'm not seeing these things?
Hmm.
Please go ahead.
Hi Lydia.
Lydia Nakata? Mr. Kana? Hello?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Oh, Elmer, the light out, the hi, the light outside on Kalili and Y Lai. Is still not fixed, have you driven around?
Yes, it did.
Oy Lai Avenue, the picture is still on the ground and I called OY electric and I mentioned it to you, can you look into that?
I will.
Because it's very, very dark.
I thought you fixed it many years, many months ago, oh my god.
No.
Will do, will do.
And the other thing is, I think the university has to look into this two hundred eleven unit that's gonna be. Built right there, planning on being built right on Y Lai because that means that many residents have to. Go in and out of the building only on OY Lai Road and that's gonna impact your folks. Sports events, the venues, you know, and us getting out of there, I hope that a traffic light is planned in the near future. Because it's a accident waiting to happen as it's a blind corner, yeah?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, thank you very much, but that like, you have more clout than me, please have that fixed.
Okay, I will.
Thank you, Elmer, thank you Chair, bye.
Thank you very much. Um, any other comments for University of Hawaii and Mr. Elmer Kai? Hearing and seeing none.
Thank you Chair.
Elmer, thank you. Okay, moving on, we're gonna go to community concerns now. Robert, you were make, I ha- I um called on you previously, I'll call on you to finish up your comments at this time.
I just wanted to let the mem- members of the community know about a meeting that's planned on uh Saturday nineteenth of August at one o'clock. This is open to all residents of Oahu, again, Saturday, the nineteenth of August at one o'clock at eleven fifty two Smith Street in Chinatown. That's the old Channel fourteen television studios, it's now New Life Center at eleven fifty two Smith Street. And it's uh uh the ability to take a look at the neighborhood board system. And to rejuvenate, renew and revitalize uh the system that we all appreciate and that's grassroots democracy. Hasn't been looked at for about fifteen years and so uh I and a couple other hundred people are trying to get together, get our best minds together and start the process. So again, that's Saturday nineteenth of August at one o'clock, eleven fifty two Smith Street. There is a city garage right behind the building off of Baritania, so parking is a breeze and we look forward to anybody who has concern. Or has issues with the neighborhood plan, the neighborhood commission, the neighborhood com- commission uh office. The way elections are hu- are run, boundaries, all that stuff should be looked at after fifteen years. To make this the most dynamic and grassroots ultra democratic system that we possibly can. So I hope to see you on Saturday nineteenth of August and thank you Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr. Armstrong. I wanna go to Mr. Shumakawa next.
Thank you Chair, um, just to echo the um. Announcement regarding the Pohor Ridge Project. Um, all residents of Manoa and Manoa Board. Uh, can go to the website of the project, which is WWW Pohor Ridge dot com. It's a private development that's gonna occur on just a half acre, less than half acre sized lot. And they're gonna have two hundred something r- units with a building that's approximately thirty stories high. That will rival the size of the Contessa, so if you haven't seen it, this is the um brochure that they have. It's like things out of focus, but go to the website. And look at the project, they do have some traffic prop issues. Because all while I rode, I believe, if I'm right, because I used to work at DOT is material. And it's a highly classified, high capacity road just before the freeway entrance. Uh, besides that, there's a there's a management issue, it is not part of the state project, I believe on state land is a private development. In which the developers try to pack it as much as possible on the on the land. So the neighborhood, the neighborhood, the neighbors in our sub district four area are very concerned. And we wanted to let everybody know that this project is coming, has been going around. And they are promoting to the only to the residents of the Manoa, I mean of the um. Moiliili Makali area, they have not contacted any other board. Including the Manoa Board as well as um the Waikiki Diamond Head, which is affected also because Waikiki Diamond Head uses. Uh, Kapoulu Avenue and Y Lai Avenue. Us, our residents of of the Zone Four Manoa only found out by chance about the project. Just by chance by somebody who was at the Saint Louis al- alumni uh. Uh, facility and they had a community hall meeting there. And again, only by chance we found out, otherwise they would have only dealt with probably Manoa, or if not University of Hawaii. So we look forward to everybody participating, including the University of Hawaii and all the other participating neighbors that are on the area, thank you.
Thank you. Tom Heimerich.
Uh, thank you Chair, uh, two things uh real quick, uh, the first is if I can go back to a comment by Robert Armstrong for a moment. Uh, just to put in proper context since uh there's been no response to this, uh, the reference to voting. And the section of the neighborhood plan, uh, what he read is absolutely correct. A majority of all the members to which the board is entitled uh is necessary, which means a minimum of nine votes. Uh, is necessary to elect someone uh to fill an appointment. Uh, the pragmatic situation this evening was the board only has nine members present. Therefore, in order for anything to pass, it would require nine votes tonight. Uh, until you have the rest of the persons in those positions, um, you have to uh change your denominator. Um, secondly is uh much earlier in the chat uh was reference to a different community event. Uh, coming up on July twenty second, uh, down on the flat in Moiliili at Old Stadium Park. Uh, some of you have been paying attention for quite a while, uh, this is going to be the uh fourth. Fourth or fifth major activity now uh with the four M Community Blue Zones Project. Four M being wherever you wanna start, uh, Manoa, Makiki, Makali, Moiliili. Uh, so Saturday, July twenty second, nine to noon at Old Stadium Park. Uh, a lot of participants from uh Moiliili Community Center, Hawaii Bicycling League and a whole bunch of other partners uh on that one. Uh, so just something else coming up uh for that, thank you Chair.
Thank you, Tom, and just to clarify one other point as well, there are a total of seventeen seats on the Manoa Neighborhood Board. The reason and as Tom's point is correct, we only have nine members of the board currently filled in positions. So that we need exactly nine members to vote for technically a um majority for the board. So there's nine out of seventeen makes the majority, so that's just a clarification on that point. And then next we have uh Mr. Jack James, go ahead.
Good evening, Miss, uh, good evening Chair and Board Members, my name is Jack James and I come before you this evening to introduce myself and my organization. Honolulu Seven Recall, we're dedicated to the removal of seven of the city council members. Uh, including my friend Calvin Say. Um, and it has to do with uh the sixty four percent salary increase. I've been a resident of Oahu for thirty, I'm just starting my thirty eighth year. And I've never had a single issue that stirred the hour of so many people uh as this issue. So we're gonna be in your neighborhood, we wanna be really good neighbors, we're going to conduct ourselves really well. But I'm gonna make sure that Chair knows how to get ahold of me, um, in case there's any questions about our activity or anything. That he'll immediately be able to reach out to me or my team leaders, we'll be in your board meeting every month. We'll be here, one of our team leaders or myself will be here to answer any questions, we're happy to be on your agenda if that needs to be. Um, but I just wanted to introduce myself this evening and let you know that this is very real. And uh uh we are, we believe we're going to be successful uh in in our goal of removing all seven. Uh, council members uh over this this action, I I I'm pal and if there's any questions and answers, I'm available, thank you Chair.
Thank you, Mr. James, do we have any other members of the committee who would like to speak at this time? Hearing and let me just make sure I go through the list of they, uh, any hands raised? I do not see any hands raised at this time, I'm closing community comments. Now, during the discussions earlier, uh, partner, do we get Mr. Lumen's information?
Yes, we did.
We're going back to item number three on the agenda to fill up the vacancy in Sub District Two where Mr. Lumen is located. Um, do we have, uh? Let's see, motions for and a second.
Mrs. Dave, I motion to uh, uh Clyde to um, Sub District Two.
My second.
We have a, we have a motion, a second, the has now come up to discussion. At this time, are there, is there any comments or discussions regarding uh Mr. Lumen's uh volunteer joining the. Board with developed the last vacancy in Sub District Two? Hearing and seeing none, roll call vote please.
Thank you Chair, uh, members, when I call your name, if you're in favor of Mr. Lumen, please state his last name, which is Lumen, if not, you can vote no. Or you can abstain, Member Watson.
Lumen.
Member Bosso.
Lumen.
Member Nagaji.
Lumen.
Member Fukumoro.
Lumen.
Member Lee.
Lumen.
Member Koff.
Lumen.
Member Chong.
Lumen.
Member Kauanau.
Lumen.
And Chair.
Lumen.
Okay, that is quorum vote, that is nine, uh, Mr. Lumen, congratulations, you have been elected to the. Uh, Manoa Neighborhood Board, if you give me just a second, we will complete your oath of office and then you will be a full-fledged member. Just a second, please.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Since we kinda messed up on the um Robert Fox vote because Philman wasn't on and then. Tried to add it again, can we re-vote on that? Now at this time? Because. Because.
Well, techni- I mean technically no, because one, like I stated earlier, the, the item was, was closed and. And Phil's vote was not the determining vote. So even, so because even if, even though he voted affirmative. There was still, having the affirmative vote did not give Mr. Fox nine votes.
Right, but now we have a larger board, so we clearly have quorum here. And so I'd like to nominate him again and we'll see how it shakes out.
Hold on, just a second. Let me, let me complete with Mr. Lumen first.
I was just thinking if he was elect, oh yeah, he's got to be, take the oath of office, yeah.
Mr. Lumen, you still there?
I'm here.
Okay, thank you sir. If you can repeat after me please. I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully support.
That I will faithfully support.
The Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Hawaii.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Hawaii.
The Charter and laws of the city and county of Honolulu.
The Charter and laws of the city and county of Honolulu.
And the provisions of the neighborhood plan.
And the provisions of the neighborhood plan.
And will conscientiously.
And will conscientiously.
And impartially discharge my duties.
And impartially discharge my duties.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
As a member of the neighborhood board.
As a member of the neighborhood board.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
Okay, thank you sir. You have completed the process.
Thank you.
One more, Mr. Lumen.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
One clarification regarding that, um, because we did technically have a vote and the vote did fail at this meeting. I'm not sure if we're able to actually revive the same issue, even if we have a new member of the board that could vote. Or if this has to be just put on the agenda for the next meeting, if Mr. Fox would like to uh fill up the vacancy at that time.
Yeah, to my knowledge, once, I mean, because we've essentially completed the process. It would be have to, it would have to be re, readdressed at the next meeting. To my knowledge.
That's my understanding as well. Um. And in any case, even if we did do it the normal process, um, Mr. Lumen's vote would not have, um. Would not have been able to do it until after, after that voting process for the sub district filling is, would have been completed anyway. Because we would have taken, I mean, we were taking the vote, uh, oath of office at that time after um, votes of approval that have been done. For each of the sub districts. So because of that, um. Mr. Fox, if you're on, you can come and join, you can see if you can join us at the next meeting as a member. But for this meeting, you was, um, we're going to have to hold off on, um, because the vote did fail. Earlier in this meeting. At this point, we're going to move on to item four on the agenda, which is the election of officers. Uh, first up, nominations for Chair of Neighborhood Board.
I'd like to nominate Robert Zane for Chair.
Thank you very much. Um, is there anybody else who would like to, um.
Does it, does it need a second?
That, no, you don't need a second for officer nominations. Um, Patty had, well Patty had her hand up. It went down. I don't know if she took it down.
Oh, just gonna sec- second, um, Ellen's nomination of Chair Zane.
Okay, thank, thank you Patty, yeah.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, for, for officer nominations, you don't need a second. The, the single nomination is, is fine. Also, also for point of clarification, you can self nominate as well. Just as a matter of, of information. But there, yeah, there is no second needed.
Thank you for the clarification that, partner. Are there any other names who would like to be not, or anybody else would like to be nominated for Chair of Neighborhood Board?
Um, I would just ask for clarification, Chair. Do you accept the nomination?
Yes, I do. I do accept the nomination. Thank you very much. Are there anybody else who would like to run for the chair position? At this time, um, partner, what are the procedures moving forward?
Now we do, um, now that you've been nominated, you've accepted the nomination. Um, nobody else has, has volunteered or named a volunteer uh to the position, then we just do, we do roll call vote.
Very well, um, roll call vote it is.
Okay, thank you. Um, members, in regards to the chair vote, if you're in favor of Member Zane becoming, becoming Chair, please state his last name. Zane, if not, you can vote no or abstain. Um, Member Watson.
Zane.
Member Bosel.
Zane.
Member Nagaji.
Zane.
Member Fukumoro.
Zane.
Member Lumen.
Zane.
Member Lee. Member Lee, your vote?
Zane.
Okay, thank you. Member Koff.
Zane.
Member Chong.
Zane.
Member Kowano.
Zane.
And Chair, your vote?
Zane.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Zane has now transformed from Chair Pro Tem into Chair of the Manoa Neighborhood Board.
Thank you very much. Uh, and I'm honored by the nomination and everybody's support on this. Moving on on the agenda, we're going to Vice Chair position. Do you have nominations for Vice Chair?
Nominate Dave Nagaji for Vice Chair.
I accept the nomination.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to name, uh, submit names for Vice Chair position? Hearing none. Roll call please.
Again, um, state the person's last name if you are in favor, which are, which is Nagaji. If not, you can vote no or abstain. Member Watson.
Nagaji.
Member Bosel.
Nagaji.
Member Fukumoro.
Nagaji.
Member Lumen.
Nagaji.
Sir, uh, Member Lee.
Nagaji.
Member Koff.
Nagaji.
Member Chong.
Nagaji.
Member Kowano.
Nagaji.
Uh, Member Nagaji.
Yes.
Nagaji.
Okay, and Chair.
Nagaji.
Okay, thank you. Dave, you are now the first Vice Chair for the Manoa Board.
Moving on to the next position, second Vice Chair.
I have another, I have a question, please, Robert.
Yes, go ahead Ellen.
We don't have to have a second Vice Chair. I mean, we're a pretty small board. For most of the time at, at I've served on Manoa Neighborhood Board, we haven't had a second Vice Chair. Uh, when Dylan Armstrong was Chair, then he wanted a second Vice Chair. But it's not an essential position in the neighborhood plan, so. You know, maybe we don't need to have that because basically if the Chair's absent. The first Vice Chair will host the meeting. If they're not there, then the Secretary would host the meeting. You know, and so there's always somebody, and then beyond that, then a longstanding board member would. Chair the meeting, but we probably wouldn't have quorum anyway if the other three were absent, so. I would suggest we eliminate the um, second Vice Chair uh at this time.
Member Nagaji, Vice Chair Nagaji, I should say. Go ahead.
Um, I, I would be in favor actually of keeping the second Vice Chair position. And one of the reasons for that is during the last officer term, there were certain um, neighborhood board events um held by um Lloyd and Company. That the uh Chair and First Vice Chair weren't able to attend, but the Second Vice Chair was. So in order to have a third person in that bracket of people who can attend those events, I think it makes sense to have a second Vice Chair.
If I could just respond to that, the, the Chair uh could just designate any board member to attend. A meeting who would be able to do that if they wanted to.
Ellen, if I may. All right, your points are well taken and it is, but I also have to admit that the second Vice Chair position is appreciated as well. Not only for that extra leadership position as, as an immediate standby. Uh, but also as a timekeeper role that it's actually been traditionally been as well, at least as far as I, when I've been on the board. Um, I'm going to open it up to see if anybody wants to be second Vice Chair. If nobody wants to be that position, then so be it, that'll go empty. But at this time, I'm opening up for second Vice Chair nominations. Um, Miss, uh, Member Lee, go ahead.
Uh, I nominate myself for second Vice Chair.
Thank you. Uh, Member Nagaji, Vice Chair Nagaji.
I nominate Whitney Bosel for second Vice Chair.
So we have a runoff, we have a two people running for, oh, first off, uh, Member Bosel, do you accept the nomination?
I do, thank you. Um, I have a question though. Are we automatically assuming the second Vice Chair will fulfill the timekeeper role as well?
Yes, although again, as, as Member Watson has stated, it's not a. It is not a clear position within the Neighborhood Board Plan, so at this, we, we've done it as a timekeeper position. That we can, the roles can be modified accordingly, but generally that has been what has been as one of the main purposes of it. But also to act as another Vice, as another Vice Chair in the event that the Chair and the Vice Chair aren't available.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um. Member Lee. You're muted again. Never Lee. You're still muted. Never Lee. Ellen, you're, you're still muted. We still cannot hear you. You gotta unmute yourself. There you go. You're unmuted now.
I would like to withdraw my nomination for a second Vice Chair.
So noted?
Yes.
Thank you, and so. We all have, now we have Member Bosel for the position of second Vice Chair. Do I hear any other nominations? Hearing none. Roll call please.
Okay, uh, in regards to the second Vice Chair vote, if you are in favor of Member Bosel, please state her last name. If not, you can vote no or abstain. Member Watson.
Bosel.
Member Bosel.
Bosel.
Member Nagaji.
Bosel.
Member Fukumoro.
Bosel.
Member Lumen. Member Lumen, your vote please.
Uh, Member Lumen.
Bosel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Member Lee.
Bosel.
Member Koff.
Bosel.
Member Chong.
Bosel.
Member Kowano.
Bosel.
And Chair.
Bosel.
Okay, thank you, Whitney. You are now the second Vice Chair for the Manoa Board.
Moving on the next item, uh, Secretary position. Nominations for Secretary.
I would like to nominate Joan Koff.
Joan, do you accept the nomination?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Do we hear any other nominations for a position of Secretary? Hearing, seeing none. Roll call please.
Just a sec. Okay, Member Watson, your vote?
Koff.
Member Bosel.
Koff.
Member Nagaji.
Koff.
Member Fukumoro.
Koff.
Member Lumen.
Koff.
Member Lee.
Koff.
Member Koff.
Koff.
Member Chong.
Koff.
Member Kowano.
Koff.
And Chair.
Koff.
Okay, Joan, congratulations. You are retained as Secretary.
Thank you.
Moving on on the agenda for Treasurer position. Uh, nominations for Treasurer.
I would like to nominate Patty Kowano.
Member Kowano, do you accept the nomination?
Uh, yes, I do, but I do have a question.
Yes.
It's okay, um, partner, um, ever since, I don't know when, last term, we didn't really have any Treasury report. I don't know what my role is supposed to be. Or if it's necessary.
That is a very good question, yes. So as of, as of recent, within the last year or so, um. NCO has, um, well, because, a little bit of backstory. Treasurer was responsible for reports in regards to board spending as it pertains to mailouts and. Um, well, yeah, essentially mailouts and notifications. Um, however, under, under state law, I believe, we as NCO are not, uh. We are required to send out meeting notice and, and minutes. Even if, let's say, the board was in the red. As far as their, as far as their spending, so because of that, NCO has um, completely absorbed. Um, that responsibility, there, there is the chance of um instances in the future. For, for a Treasurer to, to be responsible for um. For allocation of, of board spending. Um, as of right now, there isn't one. Um, but at the same time, it doesn't hurt, um, it doesn't hurt to vote someone in, like yourself Patty, in the event that it does. You know, return to, I guess, operations as it was, if, to give an easy explanation.
Okay, um, understand and thank you for the expla- explanation and. Um, I accept not be happy to serve and as backup or any other leadership role as, as I'm needed, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other names for Treasurer position? Hearing and seeing none. Roll call please.
Okay, Member Bo- uh, Member Watson, sorry.
Kowano.
Member Bosel.
Kowano.
Member Nagaji.
Kowano.
Member Fukumoro.
Kowano.
Member Lumen.
Kowano.
Member Lee.
Kowano.
Member Koff.
Kowano.
Member Chong.
Kowano.
Member Kowano.
Kowano.
And Chair.
Kowano.
Okay, congratulations Patty, you are still Treasurer.
That takes care of the election of officers. We will now move on to the next item on the agenda, which is initial convening and board business. So the meeting schedule currently, we have our board uh on the first Wednesday of the month at seven o'clock PM via Webex. Um, and the district venue is to be determined. Um, does anybody have any updates on the venue, in-person venue? Because from my understanding, Norilani cannot host us at anymore because of the issues with. Um, having to close the space for the janitor. So, uh, we're not able to use um, Norilani Cafeteria at this point. Um, there's also been some discussions about using Manoa Elementary School. Um, but I have not received any updates on that. Can anybody speak on this issue? Ellen?
As far as I know, Manoa Elementary School is not in, um, issuing any permits for. Neighborhood Board meetings or Zumba or whatever used to happen at their school at this time.
Uh, thank you, partner.
Uh, yeah, that Ellen just said half of what I was about to say. Um, the other half is, um, as far as NCO is aware, the only other. Um, only other venue is a possible room, meeting room at Manoa District Park. Um. If, if the board is, if the board is uh so, so interested in, in NCO pursuing that, uh, we can. Um, or, and, or if, or if you guys know of any other. Um, or, and, or if, or if you guys know of any other um possible venues. Within, within your district, uh please let us know.
Okay, thank you. Um, I guess first off. Time is still acceptable to everybody? Do we want, does anybody have any changes or want like changes to the time? This is, we're trying to get a three hour slot, that's why, and after everybody's on power work. I, based on board silence, I'm thinking that everybody's still okay with the current time of seven PM. And um, somebody mentioned in the chat, Manoa Library. It's not clear Manoa Library is gonna be open until this late, but we needed to be a solid three hour time slot. For, we've got, we've had a lot of meetings in the past that have gone on to three hours. Um, Member Chong.
Is it possible to go to the Innovation Center?
Uh, can anybody speak on that behalf?
We had a meeting there for um. The traffic. And that, that room is big enough.
Um, it is possible, probably, um but we had a board meeting there before. And it was a popular topic, and so they found that the room was too small. So the board decided not to do it, so that's the historical nature of it. But why don't we just stay on WebEx right now? And then think, uh, maybe partner, you can find out about the Manoa District Park Room. And give us more information in a subsequent meeting and we can address it then.
Thank you, uh especially about the um. I'm also curious about like the total capacity of that room as well. I've never seen it. Uh firsthand myself or know any of the details regarding that. Tom, Hymer, go ahead.
Tom, you're muted. Oh, there we go.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, just a quick comment. Uh, congratulations to everyone for serving on the board and filling the uh two vacancies. Uh, still more to go, uh and congratulations to the election of officers. Uh, let me just emphasize. Don't pick on partner. Uh, this is something that each and every one of the board members needs to contribute to the discussion. And that can be done by your own research outside of the meeting in order to then get that information to partner. Uh, this is an exercise that most of us have gone through way too many times. We know that there are some limitations to uh easily accessible places in the valley. Uh but please also note that nearby, outside of the district but allowed by the neighborhood plan. Are other places uh that we have also used in the past for certain meetings. So in other words, it's time to revise and rebuild the list of potential meeting places. Both for regular meetings, possible special meetings, and for committee meetings. Okay, so any ideas that you have, uh please get them to your Chair, please get them to partner. Uh but circumstances are different post-COVID. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Tom. At this time, we're gonna keep it, we're gonna keep the status quo as is, um and we'll, we'll, we'll. Bring up the topic again in the future as needed or as any updates come up. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the recess schedule. Um, let's see, we had it this time. Um, in June and to, to historically, we've also had it also like December as well. So. Well, I'm trying, at this point. Agting everybody's reaction to see what, if anybody has any preferences in terms of. Two months where we do have recess, so we don't meet on those first Wednesdays of the month. So, um Ellen.
Robert, um, according to our agenda, it says we can have now, according to the NCO. Three non-consecutive recesses, so I would just suggest that we have two. And we just have them June and December. Um, we have a couple of EIS issues coming up, so it would be good. That we don't recess again um until December would be helpful so that as issues come up, our board can address them. That's what I wanted to suggest, that we keep it the same and only take two.
Sounds good. Um, clarification, uh, partner. With, since we have up to three, could that third one be a, um, could that uh third recess be voted on at a later date?
Yeah, you don't have to decide it now. You can, somebody, a board member can make a motion for, for the board to recess in December and June. Second, we vote on it, and then that third wildcard you guys can use at a later date. It doesn't have to be done right now.
Okay, so for. Uh, just that we have this on record. I'm gonna ask for a motion to have, per Ellen's, uh, Member Watson's suggestion, to have the. Only two recesses scheduled right now for one in this, December and one in June.
Make that motion.
Motion, do we, I need a second?
Dave's seconds.
We have a, um, motion and a second. Um, don't need a roll call on this one. Um, unanimous consent, does anybody object to this? Hearing and seeing no objections. Motion's been approved, recesses are currently scheduled for June twenty twenty four and December twenty twenty three. At least one re- recess flowing. We gone to the next item, designation of board committees and chairs. So. We previously had a Traffic Safety Board and um. Couple other boards, and I was, and since this is a new term. Those chair, um, those who wanted to chair the um boards or the subcommittees on particular issue subjects. Um, we're gonna, I'm gonna ask that you revive them at this time, so that way we have it on the record that these are gonna be um. Committees for the next, um, for this session. Member Watson.
Yes, thank you. I would suggest that we have no committees at this time. I think that as issues come up, the more appropriate and best vehicle is to have permitted interaction groups. That if the board or the community identifies an issue, and. Uh whoever wants to participate in that issue will just merely ask the board to. Uh have a permitted interaction group, and there are three meetings in those. One is a convening meeting. And then they decide who's gonna do what grunt work to try to find resolution to whatever the problem is. And then, uh, they will meet and just put together their summary of findings and present it to the board to see if the board wants to take issue. And I think that makes them a lot more sense, because the issue is at hand, it's well defined. And you don't just have these standing committees out there that go looking for a problem or something. And with a permitted action group. Uh permitted, yeah, uh permitted interaction group, um you. Don't have to have an agenda, you don't have to post minutes, and it just really is focused. And you, those don't have to be three consecutive monthly meetings, there can be space in between. There's just three meetings of them. And then they present the findings to the board, and I think that's a lot more effective. You can have a number of those as long as the board approves them. But the problem is there, or the community concern is there, and then you address it. As opposed to just having these standing committees out there. Doing uh whatever they wanna do and. And then coming and presenting some. Uh, report to the board. I think that's not effective, so I think at this point, we have a small board. And we should not have standing committees. Um, I think there should be some standing topics on our agenda, like the Alawai Flood Mitigation. Manoa Banyan Court and PUCDP on there. But Elton can give any updates that are happening on the Alawai. And Whitney probably can give us any updates that. Uh, what's happening with the DPP and Manoa Banyan Court, and I can certainly speak to the D. PUCDP issues, so those, those need to be standing agenda items. But we don't need these standing committees, and that's what I think.
You for your comments? Um, okay, my, the battery on my device is going to die soon, so that's, if I, if I somehow disconnect automatically. Really abruptly, that's the reason why, um. In which case. I'm gonna open up right now to anybody who wants to form a committee. First off, just give them the opportunity to do so. Does anybody want to form a committee? Seeing none at this time. It can be opened up at a later date, but at this point, we're not gonna have any committees. And then finally on this portion is the approval of the May third twenty twenty three regular meeting minutes. Oh, I'm sorry, Member Bosel, you got your hand raised?
This, I guess, could have come up during the um, community, you know, input or whatever, but since. Member Watson brought it up, can I give a, a quick update on the Banyan Court project? Like literally just ten seconds. All, my update is simply that it's still in the hands of. Those who are trying to pursue the project. I checked in, I believe, last week Wednesday. I check in about every week, so if any community member is interested, they can always contact me. But I, I check in about every two weeks, and last I heard, they're still waiting, they have not gotten any further submittals or um. Even any communication from the applicant, so that's all, thank you.
Thank you. And I guess at that point, moving on to the approval of the Wednesday, May third twenty twenty three regular meeting minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes?
We have a motion, a second, uh, discussions are open, any changes, comments? Hearing and seeing none, um unanimous consent, does anybody oppose the approval of the meeting minutes for May third twenty twenty three? Hearing and seeing none, meeting minutes are approved from twenty twenty three, from May third twenty twenty three. At this time, we're gonna move on, we've gone through city reports, community concerns, state reports, announcements. Um, announcements, next meeting, next regular board meeting. Sorry, is somebody saying no?
Don't we have community concerns?
We did that already.
We addressed earlier. So, next meeting is next regular board meeting will be held on Wednesday, August second twenty twenty three via WebEx. Online platform and the Kapal Amahali Conference Room one five three. Remember, this is O'Leary Broadcast, uh, and you can watch it on the second and fourth Saturdays of the month at three o'clock PM or every third Tuesday. At nine o'clock PM or online at olelo.org. At that point, that takes care of all announcements, and we are a journey at nine forty-three PM. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. New board, congratulations, welcome to the board. Welcome to your new officer positions, looking forward to working with all of you moving forward. I will see you all on August second. Good night, sleep tight, and we are done.